Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting is being video recorded and broadcast live on Pennfield TV's Government Access Channel, which includes Spectrum Cable 1303, online at www.pennfieldtv.org, and social media platforms Facebook and YouTube via Town of Pennfield Television. Following the proceedings tonight, the video recording will be available on the town's website and on streaming devices Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. You need to just search for Pennfield TV in your app store, and that is free. If anyone wishes to address the board tonight during the public hearing matter, there's going to be an opportunity for public participation in several ways, following the application's presentation to the board and board comments and questions. What are those ways? Well, one is anybody that's here in person and wants to speak will invite up to the microphone, and you can give us your name and address, and then make your comments about the application. Another way is people can call in, 340-8771, with their questions or comments. And another way is for people to submit comments electronically. So you'll see me every once in a while reaching over to this computer to see if anybody is in queue either on the phone or with an electronic comment. In any event, electronic comments are through the town's website as well, pennfield.org. We value your involvement, and we certainly encourage any participation in these proceedings. And I, on behalf of myself and my fellow board members, like to say each month that we think the town does a very good job of publicizing the proceedings and the agenda each and every month, so that people are more fully informed of their right to come in and speak about the applications. And how does the town do this? Various ways. One way is to make sure the agenda's posted on the website. Another way is to do it the old-fashioned way, if you will, and post the agenda here on the bulletin board. But the town also sends postcards to property owners who that own property within a certain number of feet of the subject property. So we probably all have received them, little postcards that say, hey, the property at 100 Main Street is under review. If you have any questions about it, feel free to call this number. And then the final method I typically mention is one we've also all seen, and that's having the applicant post a sign on the property, so that when folks drive by, they see something similar message, this property is under review by the town, feel free to call this number to find out more information. And as I said, we appreciate that. We appreciate the opportunity for folks to come in. Tonight's meeting, we're going to have a very brief work session, and I don't think we have any tabled items, right? Or we have the one that has continued to be tabled?
Yes.
So we'll take care of that in about 10 seconds. And then we'll launch right into the one public hearing matter that we have for tonight. There won't be any need, I don't think, to take a break in between the work session and the public hearings, so we'll probably move right into it rather quickly. With that being said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice drawn.
Great. Thank you all. All right. So let me just go to the agenda. Now typically, at this point, we'd have minutes from the last meeting to review, but we don't have those yet, so we're just going to leave that item for the next meeting that we have. And again, as far as the work session goes, we'll start with the tabled matter. 2209 Pennfield Road. That applicant has a application pending before the planning board simultaneously, and they're working out some details, so I understand the applicant wishes us to continue to table this.
Correct, yes.
All right. Given that, I'd make a motion to table this at the request of the applicant.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Let's then launch right into the one matter that's on tonight, the public hearing. Please, Andy, if you could read that into the record.
Sure. Chick-fil-A, 520 Buffington Road, Atlanta, Georgia, 30349. Requests approval for area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow the construction of a new restaurant with drive-through and associated site improvements with less setback than required under Section 250-5.6-D3 of the code, less buffer than required under Section 250-7.2-A of the code, less parking than required under Section 250-7.7-D of the code, and greater lot coverage, less green space than required under Section 250-6.3-F2 of the code at 2051 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. The applicant is also requesting approval for a special permit for signage under Section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow more building signage than permitted under Section 250-10.13-C of the code, signage with greater graphics, trademarks, or logos than permitted under Section 250-10.11-E of the code, and a larger freestanding sign than permitted under Section 250-10.12-B1 of the code with less setbacks than permitted under Section 250-10.12-D of the code. The property is currently or formerly owned by No Look Landing LLC and is zoned limited business, SBL number 125.17-1-9. This is application number 24Z-0058. I'd also like to note that the request for greater lot coverage, less green space, has been withdrawn, as the applicant or the project's going to comply with that requirement.
And Andy, along those lines, before we call the applicant up, I think there was an issue early on as to whether directional signs on the plan would be would need approval or not. That's changed, hasn't it?
Yeah. The initial application was a request for approval for some of the traffic control signage, but determination was made by staff that that those variances are not required, not necessary.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Good job reading that.
Thanks.
It wasn't a short one. So we may have the applicant come up, and any representatives, and just give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Charles Gottlieb from the law firm of White Men, Osterman, and Hanna in Albany, New York, here this evening with our project engineer Randy Bevout from Bowler Engineering, and our project traffic engineer Nick Merrifield from Pacero Engineering.
Great. If you don't mind, I'm already interrupting you before you really get a chance, but I just want to let you know that typically what we do here is we've all reviewed the application like we do each one. Typically, they're very thorough. Yours thorough application. So we like, in order to be efficient, move things along, sort of to lead the applicant through the issues, if you will. And then, of course, you reserve the right to comment and speak on the application, fill in the blanks or whatever. So I don't want you to. I wanted to tell you that upfront, so you don't say, what the heck is this guy doing up there? You'll certainly be given. And I'm going to actually ask Andy to put some stuff on the record before we start as well, so.
Sure.
Go ahead and finish your intro, if you will.
That was pretty much it.
That was it?
We're here for, you know, a Chick-fil-A restaurant. Town staff did a great job of explaining what we're here for. You know, we can run through the project and the variances and the justifications, if you'd like, but otherwise, you know, we'll take your lead.
Okay. So I'm going to first start by asking Andy for everybody's information here. If you can give us a brief recap of the application that Chick-fil-A filed previously, and to a large extent was before this board, that was approved, I don't know, a year and a half ago, two years ago, whatever it was, for a location half a mile south on Route 250? Because in a sense, this is a very similar application. So I think that's germane to what we're going to talk about tonight.
Sure. So, yeah, a couple of years ago, Chick-fil-A was proposing a development of the property to the south on the east side of 250, just south of Pennfield Road. They needed, and they requested several variances similar to what's being requested tonight for this development. They did receive variances, setback variances, for the canopy for the other project, both a side and a front setback variance. This project is only seeking a side setback variance for the canopy. They also received approval for less parking, which is also being requested for this project. And they received approval for a special permit for signage to allow additional building and some other signage on the property at the other project, which is similar to what's being requested for the application.
Okay. And previously, did they have to apply for, and did they receive permission from the planning board?
They did have an application before the planning board, but my understanding is that application was withdrawn.
Okay. And that was an application for conditional use permit and site plan approval as well?
Correct.
If people remember. So in essence, a very similar process a couple of years ago.
Yes.
And requests for variances made of this board that were, to a certain extent, granted.
Yes.
All right. And again, you've mentioned the issue of the directional signs not being part of it, the application, because town staff said that that wasn't part of the variance, didn't need to be part of the variance request.
Right.
Okay. Now, what I'd like to do, if it's all right, is just kind of do my run-through of your requests and what I think are your reasons and justifications for them. And then you feel free to fill in the blanks, and fellow board members, fill in the blanks as well. As I said, you've submitted a pretty thorough application, and, you know, this isn't the first variance request like this that we've handled. That's one of the reasons I brought up your variance request from a couple of years ago. So, in any event, parking variance. You need X number of spots. I think it's maybe like 180, give or take a few, and you're asking for just under 100. Permission to have just under 100, or 88, or whatever the number is. I know that's something that has changed. I did watch your two planning board meetings, and I know there's a discussion of land banking, which is one method of preserving green space, and that, I think, is one of the reasons why we don't have that variance request anymore in front of us. But in any event, you're asking for permission to reduce the number of parking spots in about half, give or take, whatever the figure is, a percentage, 180 required, and you're asking for 88 or 90. And the reason for that is, in essence, that based upon your service at other locations, you don't think you're going to need that many parking spots, because people don't go in fast food restaurants like they used to. And at the time the code was written, that is pretty stringent code here in terms of the number of spots that are required, was years ago, and things have changed. So you have looked at your other locations in this area, and probably around the country, and made the argument that, given what you anticipate in terms of service and volume, 90, whatever the number of spots you're asking for, is more than sufficient, and you have room for that. That's one. Another variance request is an area variance for the canopy. And what the canopy is, is a roof, if you will, a cover for your employees who are out in the drive lane taking orders. And I don't know, do they take payment too?
Yes, that is correct.
So they take orders, they take payment, so customers, the only window they have to deal with is the one where they get their food, I think. That's the theory.
Well, yeah, so what that does is, there is a menu board there for hours of lower operation that people can order from, but during peak times and likely the majority of the day, to have that dual-lane drive-through function appropriately, team members are in the first canopy to the south there where the area variance is needed. They take orders, they take payment, they assist people through the drive-through, conduct traffic control and so forth. And that allows the dual-lane drive-through to go completely through, adding more ability for stacking.
All right. And the building itself doesn't need that same, the reason you need this variance is because of the canopy?
Correct.
All right. And let's see, parking space, so the residential zoning buffer. So, you know, that's a zoning rule that when we go from one zoned area to a different zoned area, you like to have a little bit of buffer in between that. And I think you need a variance of 35 or 33 feet, whatever it is, from the requirement of 50 feet. And that, I guess, is due to the location, the proposed location of the building. So, you know, we'll certainly ask you why the building needs to go there, why you need the variance, that sort of thing. And that's, you know, very similar to a site plan issue as well. And then I think the last request is for signage. And code allows one building-mounted sign. You're asking for four, one on each side, I believe. And then you're also asking for a pole sign, not a monument sign, a pole sign, out near the entrance, and that's larger than code allows. And you need a setback variance on that because of the location that you want to place it.
Yeah, I would just add, related to the signage, one is, we don't need any variances related to the signage. The code allows us to obtain a special use permit from this board. Related to the signage, there are three Chick-fil-A insignia signage on the building itself. It's important to also understand there's no signage on the canopies. One of the signages is simply welcome family and friends sign. Related to the pylon sign, that is both for square footage and the location.
Right.
And the setback that we're asking relief from for that sign is from the lot to the south, not to the front yard. And that sign is important for traffic control. There is going to be a new traffic light here that Chick-fil-A will be providing on Route 250 where that access point is. That access point now does not have pylon signage. I think there's a small monument sign there for a building. But it will be vitally important for those traveling to this location to understand that this is the access point for the Chick-fil-A, so that they will be able to use the traffic mitigation offered by that new traffic signal.
Okay. And you're definitely right about the signs. It's not really technically a variance, but it's a special permit. But the code does say one building-mounted signs, and you're asking for it. So in essence, to a certain degree, it's, it is treated the same as a variance, I guess. I guess I'll put it that way. All right. So let's, anybody have anything to add to this sort of intro?
Yeah.
So let's first talk about the canopy. And if you don't mind, just for everybody's sake here, when we are asked to grant area variances, well-established law that the board members in deciding how to vote are to undertake a balancing test. And there are a number of factors that we have to consider and weigh when we're making our decision. And I'm sure we'll run through each of those. But it's also important to note that it's not as if these factors are assigned points, and then you add up the total score and say, okay, if you score more than 70, you get the variance. It's a balancing test. And it's possible that any voting board member thinks that the applicant on any given request hasn't met four of the tests, yet meets one, and still can validly grant the variance request. So not one factor is necessarily determinative here or non-determinative. So that's the, for the area variances, that's the process through which we will go when we are determining, and we'll weigh each of those in determining whether the area variance requests should be granted. And again, with the special permit, there are similar factors as there are with the area variances. So again, let's start with the canopy, and if you could just quickly run through each of those standards and give us your justifications for granting the variance.
Sure, of course. The first area variance standard that is in New York law is, and I'm going to summarize here, does the requested area variance have an adverse impact on the neighborhood? This site has been designed to separate the drive-through from the off-street parking. Traditional, older restaurants of this neighborhood often have a building in the middle, drive-through wrapped around, with off-street parking around it. That has a tendency to create pedestrian vehicular conflict. So the new, modern designs are to separate the drive-through area as much as possible from off-street parking. This design, and Randy, stop me if I'm wrong, wanted to put the operations towards the south to utilize the northern and center portion of the project site for off-street parking. One is, to the south, we're bordered by a commercial shopping center that has the Pennfield Pub, off-street parking facilities for that, Starbucks, Dunkin' Donuts, Jersey Mike's, similar restaurants. So there is no adverse impact to the neighborhood, given that the neighborhood that is impacted here is commercial in nature. Secondly, the building itself is setback, I believe, 50, I have the number here. The building itself is setback 52.6 feet, so well in compliance with the code. And this is, like I said, a sleek, open-air canopy, and the elevations were up previously, so you can see how minor it is. So you don't get the feeling that there is essentially a building there. Another one of the area variance standards is related to, let's see, whether or not the request is substantial. New York case law tells us that's not just a numerical evaluation. This board, because it is a balancing test, is allowed to weigh all the different factors and view something in context of its surroundings. So here, 20 feet is required. We're proposing 7.8-foot setback, so it's a 12.2-foot area variance request. And again, we say that's not substantial, because it really has no adverse impact to the southern property, which is all commercial. We're not asking the setback from any nearby residences and so forth. Another evaluation is whether or not this area variance will result in any environmental harm or neighborhood harm. Again, we've placed it in a position where it is going to be adjacent-only commercial uses. There are no adverse environmental impacts related to this area variance. In fact, it's a mitigation measure related to internal traffic circulation. Without full, efficient drive-through of the dual lanes, there could be backups in the drive-through. Without team members out there all year round and needing this canopy for cover, the drive-through would come to a halt, maybe. You would have less ability in the dual-lane drive-through to take as many orders, make sure people are going through the drive-through efficiently. Let's see. Whether or not there, another standard or review balancing test is whether or not there is any other alternative means. And that alternative means can't be a profound departure from what we have proposed. We have played with the site plan several different times. Like I had mentioned, it's always a balance of, if we move the building to the north, are we going to lose parking? If we put the building in the middle with the drive-through around, as I mentioned, traditional restaurants of this nature are like, then we result in vehicular, pedestrian conflicts quite often. And we really need to maximize the drive-through with the dual lanes to service our customers. So this is the least intrusive means for this variance request or the placement of the canopy, being adjacent to the other commercial uses. The last balancing factor, which is always my favorite to argue in front of Zoning Board of Appeals, is whether or not this variance is self-created. I will highlight that New York law and the statute itself said, recognizes this is an incredibly difficult factor to assess. Certainly, Chick-fil-A has modernized drive-throughs. There aren't many drive-throughs that have this team member approach, where your food is delivered by team members and orders taken by members. So the area variance request is a result of two things. One, the need to make sure that drive-through is operating efficiently. And two, to make sure that we are separated from the off-street parking. And in that sense, I submit it's not self-created, but a circumstance of evolving restaurants of this type and their design.
All right. One question that I have on the canopy itself is, from looking at that diagram, maybe the answer is obvious, but can it be made any smaller such that the variance request is reduced and the purpose is largely served?
I'll hand that over to, that sounds like an engineering question.
Yeah. The canopy is designed to protect all three lanes. If we narrow that up, particularly the orientation of the site, a lot of the times, we get our wind and rain coming out of the southwest. So if we narrow that up, the effectiveness of that canopy at the third lane, you know, the value of that decreases, you know, as we narrow that up. So it's designed to a certain width. It's a little more, obviously, over the center of the third lane. It really makes it worth the value of what we're providing.
So all three of those lanes will be served not only by cars, but by staff members?
They could be, yes.
Could, could, yeah.
The third lane is additional capacity during, you know, we would anticipate that third lane is at, you know, your lunchtime hours, your dinner hours. The operator that's selected also has some ability to run that even as a mobile order pickup lane. We don't know exactly how they're going to run it, but it does give them that option to do that, that they could send cars through there for mobile order pickup to get sort of past the people that are ordering. That is an option for them. But, yeah, the main intent of it would be for that overflow peak time to maximize the team members, and as Charles said, just to keep that drive-through working efficiently with the whole idea. And we have a pretty good stack in the tan shaded drive-through area, but just to keep that moving and keep it out of the parking lot area.
So, I have a couple. I'm sorry.
I also have a couple.
I saw you raising your hand over there on the side of my eye.
I'm, believe it or not, I've never been to a Chick-fil-A. Is three lanes normal? Are all of your other sites in Rochester have three lanes for queuing?
They do not, but the original Pennfield site was, we were planning on three lanes there. They're learning as they go, right? And it depends on the location. You know, currently, if you think about where this is at, there is no other Chick-fil-A's. I mean, the closest Chick-fil-A is Rona Coit, we have Grease, and Henrietta. So it's not like, oh, well, we're the next town over. So we're planning for, you know, that capacity and the ability to serve three lanes of cars and maintain efficiency in that drive-through lane.
And sorry if I didn't know, did the planning board ask for three lanes, or was that Chick-fil-A who said, no, we want three lanes?
That's Chick-fil-A's preference.
I didn't know, because I know you've gone through a couple iterations with the... I didn't know, because I know you've gone through a couple iterations with the, the planning board. And I'm sorry, I'm, can you just walk me through the flow? Because your, your diagram is confusing to me. I'm going to pull in at a brand-new light.
Yep.
That'll be, right now, I'm pulling into like Dunkin' Donuts, right? So that's, that's where I'm going to pull in. And I'm going to take a hard right.
Yep.
To pull in. That's a sharp turn, right?
Well, it's, I mean, it's 90 degrees with a little bit of angle to it. It's not out of the ordinary.
It's already there.
Okay.
It's the road that's there.
Okay. So we're going to pull all the way in and then follow the arrow?
Yep.
I want to go to the drive-through? I got to go all the way in the back?
The intent is to encourage people to go to the northern driveline. And the, the idea behind that is just in reference to what Charles was talking about, just to minimize the pedestrian vehicle conflicts.
Yep.
I mean, clearly, we have parking in the, the southern driveline, but the more cars we can encourage to go to the back, we just feel like that's a, a better option.
Oh, I, I go to the McDonald's all the time. It's, I know exactly what you're talking about. It's...
And this was a change that the, the planning board also recommended.
Okay. So you go all the way, am I going to be able to, I see your arrows. Would I be able to turn left down the first?
So you're going to go, you're heading, heading north.
But where his arrow, where his hand was just then, would, is that a one-way or would I be able to still turn there?
I mean, technically, you can turn that, but we, we are signing that as if, to encourage people to go to the north. We are signing it as a one-way driveline. It is two cars wide because we have 90-degree parking.
Okay.
In that southern driveline, but we're signing it and striping it to, to encourage people to go to the northernmost driveline. Then you would take a left, head to the west, and then you would take another left and be in line with the drive-through lane.
With three? I, I just didn't know the flow. Thank you. Go ahead, George.
So Andy, one thing, we had at least, I'm, I'm pretty sure it was either the, the Chipotle or what, there was one other in that area that also had a variance similar to this for the canopy. The building didn't need it, but the canopy, do you recall that and how big of a variance that was?
Well, I believe that was for the other Chick-fil-A. You're saying there's a, was it?
I thought we did a variance for another one of the drives-through. I mean, I could be, could be mistaken, but...
Not that I, not that I can think of, I'm sorry.
And then my other question to you is the, the, behind that is, is commercial. Have you talked to the, those commercial entities to make sure that they don't have a concern with the proposed variance and closeness?
Yeah, so just a little history there. When we first submitted this, we were actually requesting a setback variance on the front canopy and the side. There was a comment from the adjacent property owner about concern with that front setback. As part of that comment and really in also working with the town staff, we've, we modified the plan so that we didn't need the front setback variance for the canopy. That sits at the front setback line, so the building sits even further back than that. So yeah, we've, we've modified the plan to minimize that from what was two variances request to, to one for the side.
No, and that's good. I just want, just the question was more about if you've had conversations with those property owners, they are okay with the, with these variances or, and if so, I mean, it would be beneficial if you could provide us some documentation of those conversations and their...
Yeah, I mean, because, because we are getting access, we will have a shared access agreement, both with the town and the, the adjacent neighbor. We are, Chick-fil-A is in conversation with the adjacent property owners for working through those access easements.
And the owners of the Penfield Pub at our first planning board meeting were there. We spoke with them after the meeting. And again, they're, they're a party to that existing shared access. So there's coordination throughout.
Yep.
What George is mentioning is something that we often do when the affected neighbor with a setback request is a residential home.
Mm-hmm.
And that's often helpful to us if the neighbor most, or affected at all, gives a letter of support, shall we say. So yeah, I guess, you know, if the, if the pub would do such a thing, that might be helpful, but a lot of the comments and concerns that we often have with area setbacks are because of residences. And you know, we, you've pointed out, we don't have that here on this end. And just to summarize your other arguments when you were making them about other feasible methods, if I'm understanding you correctly, part of your argument is that, hey, if we had moved the building further north, or if we had a canopy that only covered two lanes or if we just had two lanes, that would cause problems in other areas, including the traffic flow. It would sort of interfere with or, or mess up, if you will, the traffic flow that you've outlined and the parking spots that you've outlined. So yes, it's a variance request. We could argue about whether or not it's substantial, but if you were to take steps to reduce this variance, it would lead possibly to problems, other problems in the area. And that's why you think the solution that you've offered is the best one.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant on this particular variance?
No.
No.
Okay. So then let's go through, through the, unless you have more to add?
No, you know, the only thing I'll add...
See, lawyers always say no and then they add. That's great. No problem.
That was the first, the...
No, except.
First, first day of law school, I learned that.
Good move.
I just want to highlight that right now, this is a pretty vacant and blighted piece of vacant property that's really, you know, not taxed to its fullest extent. Adding more landscaping and a vibrant use to this property is certainly an upgrade for the town, and that's kind of a blanket statement for the entire project.
Actually, that, that raises another point. In the area, on this last variance request, what's going to be between the canopy and the property line? It's hard to tell from that drawing, but it...
Yeah, we're, it's just shown as proposed green space, so I will note, currently, the existing pavement for the gymnastics place is actually across the property line today. So we're, part of that, we're, we would have a temporary construction easement, and we will be removing some pavement on the adjacent property to create that green area in between. And then the, on the adjacent property, there's existing trees and stuff. That's all intended to, you know, we're not impacting that.
Right. So the trees will, will, in a sense, act as a buffer to the canopy?
That's correct.
That was the point that I was slowly getting to.
Yeah, you can see they're very mature. This project will have no impact on that, but we are adding some green space, more green space than exists there today between the two parking lots.
Okay. Great. All right. So we don't have any more questions from the board on that. So yeah, if we're okay, let's go to the parking spot, space request.
So the, the parking request is, the, the town has a process by which you have your zoning compliance officer, your building inspector, make a determination based on use and occupancy of the building as to how many parking spaces will be required. So for a 5,397 square foot restaurant, the determination is 181 parking spaces would be required for this project. Now, I can imagine that that seemed, that that's just simply an enormous amount of parking spaces for a Chick-fil-A restaurant or a McDonald's or any restaurant, or really any use other than a Walmart or something, Target or something of that nature. So by using the area variance, we are limiting the amount of impervious surfaces that would be required by compliance with the zoning code. Certainly, no one wants to see multiple, multiple acres of property blacktop for 181 parking spaces. And so what we've done is, we've looked at other comparable Chick-fil-A's in the region. Bowler Engineering in my office do Chick-fil-A's all over the state, and you're able to learn in, you know, this area with the distance away from other Chick-fil-A's, how many parking spaces will actually be needed. So we provided that data in our original submission in November. Similar Chick-fil-A's in the region are right around the 65 to 70 region. We had initially proposed, I want to say 99 parking spaces. We removed 10 parking spaces where you see those trees are now at the planning board's request, realizing that we're still over what comparable Chick-fil-A's in the region have for off-street parking, but with the understanding that, as Randy just mentioned, other Chick-fil-A's are quite a bit, a distance away, so there's not necessarily the option to go somewhere else. This might be a more active site. So we believe the parking is sufficient based on that. The other aspect of this is that Chick-fil-A operations, as you notice by the two-and-a-half lane drive-through, do have a lot of drive-through customers. Off-street, or off-street parking for these types of uses are becoming, you know, things of the past for mobile orders and so forth. And so we're really right in the sweet spot of required parking. So related to impacts to adjacent neighbors and the neighborhood generally, you know, we're really mitigating an impact that would be otherwise seen by zoning code compliance and providing 181 parking spaces. There won't be any spillover into the roadways or any jam-up of off-street parking because we are providing more parking spaces than we're seeing needed elsewhere in the region. Related to how substantial the area variance is, we are requesting, you know, permission for 88 where 181 is required. So numerically alone, sure, that's substantial, but again, cases tell us to look to the context of the overall application and the totality of the circumstances. And the totality of the circumstances here is that we're adjacent to a commercial area. We are limiting the amount of impervious surface here, which is always a good thing, and we simply don't need that many parking spaces. Related to other alternatives, as I had mentioned, we did have 10 extra spaces to the west there. The planning board asked that we remove those after looking at the comparable data and seeing, well, we're still over that comparable data. Initially, they said, let's land bank it, but Chick-fil-A felt as though we don't need to land bake it, we can remove it at the planning board's request and add more green space. So that was the alternative that was reviewed, was those 10 extra spaces to the west there. The planning board advised that they did not necessarily want to see that adjacent to the park. Let's see. Any environmental impacts from the area variance? Actually, the area variance is creating a more environmentally friendly project by not paving 181 parking spaces. And whether or not the variance is self-created, the variance is actually created by the manner in which the, the town requires off-street parking, solely looking at use and occupancy of the building and not the operations of the use. So with that said, you know, we're here to answer any questions related to off-street parking.
Okay. So speaking of occupancy, if the restaurant were at maximum on any given moment, how many people, patrons would be in there around?
Give the seating number.
Yeah, I don't, I want to say the seating is...
And I'm going to ask the same question about employees.
Yep.
Because I'm just trying to get, if it were fully occupied, how many people would be in there? Employees and customers?
I want to say that number is in the... I apologize for...
It's all right. What I'm getting at is if it were fully occupied and you had the maximum number of employees, how does that number compare to 188 parking spots?
So the number of employees, while Randy tries to look at the, the seating, the number of employees, we gave a conservative estimate of a maximum of 25 employees. You may see that on a really busy day or during a grand opening period. Chick-fil-A's are typically between 15 and 20 employees on a normal day.
Okay.
I just have to take a second to look up the seating.
Yeah, I don't have that. I believe the seating is somewhere in the neighborhood. Estimated about 70 seats.
Okay. It's not, it's not more than 100?
No.
So let's, let's say it's 100, just for purpose of my question. 100?
I have the numbers here. It's, they're right on the site plans. 70 seats interior, 24 seats exterior.
Okay.
So 100.
Thanks.
Yeah, you hit it.
So 100 on a nice sunny day and 25 employees, 125 people. And, and yet, 188 spots are required by the code or whatever the code is. So that, and that would be, that comparison would, I guess, assume that each of the 125 people are driving and are parking there, which is unlikely that they all would be, very unlikely. So I, I bring that point up just to sort of illustrate that, and frankly, it's not the first time that we've dealt with the issue here, that the parking requirements, as you cited, especially now in 2024, with regard to uses like this, do, do seem to be, you know, outdated, I guess, to be quite candid is a word that, that I would use. I would note, I think Andy already pointed it out, or maybe George asked a question, but a couple of years ago, we did have a request from the McDonald's quarter mile down the road. In essence, they wanted to build an additional drive-through lane. You were involved in that, right?
Don't recall.
Ah, and in order to do that, they made a request to reduce the number of required parking spots because, in essence, saying the same thing, whatever year that was, times have changed, things have changed with fast food restaurants, and people don't go in like they used to, hence, we don't need those parking spots. And their request was, for the most part, granted, I don't remember the specifics, and I don't believe we've had any problems or, or issues at that location. It's a different location, it's, but to a certain extent, I just, again, want to point that out because consistency in how we analyze things and vote is, is important to the board as it should be. So any other questions on the parking one? Okay. Let's go to the buffer.
So the residential buffer requirement was, so initially, when we applied to the board in November, we were requesting four area variances. And speaking with town staff and some changes to the site plan, we're down to three. This one is, is one that we had not originally applied for and amended our application essentially. The town code requires a 50-foot setback between any commercial use and a residential zoning district. Not a residential use, but a residential zoning district. So we have commercial zoning districts, as you'll see, to our north and south. However, the Thomas Whalen Park is to our west. The Thomas Whalen Park is in the R120 zoning district, so we're required to have that 50-foot setback. We inquired with town staff as to how that is measured. That is measured from the parking area. Now, one really important aspect of this variance request is, we are actually going to be improving on an existing non-conformity. So at the moment, the vacant gymnastics center parking lot is 33.25 feet away from that western property line, and we are proposing 35.6 feet from that western property line. So the non-conformity of the zoning code is getting smaller. Related to consistency and any detrimental impacts to the neighborhood, again, I highlight, we're improving an existing non-conformity. Also, that setback requirement to a residential district is likely required to buffer, an additional buffer for residential uses. We're not adjacent a residential use here. We're adjacent a town municipal park use, which while also sensitive, is not, is not going to be impacting anyone sleeping or their quiet hours and so forth. And in fact, we are improving on an existing walkway connection from the park to the site. So we can envision a situation where folks at the park would be walking over to the facilities for lunch or dinner, what have you. Also related to the... Also, related to the character of the neighborhood, the aerial that was up not too long ago showed that there's an existing access drive behind the shopping center to the south, and it does appear that that existing access drive encroaches on that 50-foot setback, partially even more than the existing gymnastics center does. So we are staying in line with existing development and making it better. Let's see.
Yeah, and I would just note that the sidewalk connection was a request of town staff when we kicked this project off, that they thought it made sense. Currently, there's a pair of old wooden steps there that it's not, you know, there's no defined path, but people have kind of worn a path maybe through the trees, so that was a request of town that we provide a more defined path to the park. Obviously, there's some annual events that are held there, and it's logical that people will want to walk to Chick-fil-A.
Related to any alternative, feasible alternatives, again, we've reduced this variance by getting rid of those 10 parking spaces to the west. If we were to move the drive-through facilities and the parking spaces more to the east for compliance, we would lose stacking capacity in the drive-through, and we would lose off-street parking requirements. So you would be increasing your off-street parking variance in that aspect. Environmental impacts to this, one of the comments from the town's landscape consultant was to maintain existing vegetation that's along that buffer, and also, we will be doing additional plantings in that area where those 10 parking spaces were. So we'll be enhancing the buffer. Related to visual impacts, again, we have a vacant blighted older gymnastics facility there, somewhat of an eyesore from the park, and reinstalling an active use to the property. Not only is it visually aesthetically more pleasing, but it also increases safety. The more property is used, the safer they become. So that is vitally important, being next to a public park.
Is there, on this request, is there any portion of the building or the canopy that's in the buffer, or is it strictly asphalt?
Excuse me, I believe it's strictly asphalt. The dumpster enclosure, Randy, do you know if that's from the dumpster enclosure?
Yeah, that dumpster enclosure, that, you can see the line sort of splits the dumpster enclosure.
I believe that's the buffer line right here?
Yes.
The dotted line or dashed line?
Yes. Just if you can zoom in, Andy, I'm pretty sure that's the 50-foot buffer line? Yes.
Yep.
So the area variance we're seeking there is 14.4 feet, which essentially is from that dotted line to the edge of the pavement.
All right. Any other questions from board members on this request?
No.
No.
No? Okay. All right, let's go to the, if you're, if you're done on that point, we can go to the signage.
Yep. So we submitted a signage survey and the building elevations, which you will see there. The first request we seek relief from is 250-10.11E, which requires graphics, trademarks, and logos shall not exceed 50% of the face area of any sign, or in the case of a double-faced sign, the above shall not exceed 50% per face. So you'll notice that the three signs that we have there, you see the Chick-fil-A lettering and then the square chicken insignia, the majority of those signs, 100% of those signs are, excuse me, Chick-fil-A insignia and graphics. So that's where the relief is required there. While we're on that topic, we have, or that elevation, rather, we have four building signs where one is permitted. You have the Chick-fil-A lettering, you have the Chick-fil-A insignia, and then you also have, at the beginning there, you can see it by the front door, it's a welcome friends and neighbors, I believe it says, excuse me. So that is our fourth sign that we're seeking approval for. Related to the pylon sign in the front, we're requesting approval of the pylon sign, as you see there, which again is 100% Chick-fil-A insignia on the top there, but it is setback 10 feet from the southern property line. So that's where the commercial shopping center is, by the access drive. And again, that location gets us to a point that is nearby the entrance, so that those traveling 250 will know that the entrance is at the light. And those are, those are the requests we've made. I went through the prior approvals, and as you can imagine, all Chick-fil-A signage packages are the same for every project. So that one was previously approved by this board, and so, you know, we're requesting that, that repeated approval, that same approval for this site.
How many building signs were requested previously and how many were granted? Do we, we know?
It's like the, it was approved for three building signs.
Okay.
I believe they may have requested four, but three were approved.
All right.
Can you go back and where the three? I see the welcome sign, that'll be right at the front, but just one more time, where specifically the big signs are? So that'll be over the front door, and then you have two insignia, yeah, that's over the drive-through? So that would be for people at the pub could see?
That, that is facing the street, that's facing 250.
That is facing 250.
Yep.
Where is that facing?
Towards the pub.
That's facing towards the pub.
On the front east corner.
It's a south elevation, that's all I see.
So that would be towards the pub, and that, those are the only two, and then the friends and family one?
There, three, there's three and then the welcome sign.
Where's the third Chick-fil-A sign? So you have one that's going to be facing the pub, one that's going to be just the logo facing the street?
Yep.
One on the other side, so if you're coming up the, like, from the YMCA and you're driving up?
So there's one on the north side, one on the east side, and one on the south side.
There's two on the north side, because there's the welcome friends and neighbors.
One Chick-fil-A, welcome neighbor side.
But none on the west side?
That's correct.
Is there a reason for the welcome friends and neighbors besides, like, welcoming friends and neighbors?
Is there a inconsistency to it? I'm just curious.
It's a consistent brand item.
Okay, and then that appears in other Chick-fil-A's in Monroe County?
Yes, yes, it does.
Because I, I'm looking at the resolution, I don't see that as part of the resolution from the prior application, but I...
Well, Chick-fil-A buildings are constantly evolving, so you're likely seeing kind of the most recent iteration of Chick-fil-A, Chick-fil-A facilities. What I'll notice on that sign that you can see from the building elevations is, it's not high up, so the Chick-fil-A insignia signs are higher up, and that gives people on the shared access drive and on Route 250 another opportunity to see the building so that they don't become distracted drivers. But the friends and family is at a lower height, so it would really be seen from internal to the site.
Couldn't you accomplish the same thing by putting a decal in the window?
That would obviate the need for a sign.
Sure, what we can do is, we can go back, right, and we can talk about that with Chick-fil-A and our clients and see what we can do.
I mean, if, if we're trying to reduce the number, it, it seems like that's a good place to start, especially since you can put it right on the doors.
Do, do window decals count as a sign under the town code?
As long as they're on the inside of the window, they're, they're not...
Oh, okay.
And the pole-mounted sign, does that, are the faces of that facing north and south? So if you're driving down 250?
Yes.
And I get the pole, I'm just, I get it, I get why, like, I'm thinking about McDonald's, Burger King, all up 250, I'm just, this location's a little bit different. Does this open up, like, does the pub want a pole sign?
That was my question, if I...
I'm just, I get why you need it, like, I get the, so I'm, I'm just trying to, like, again, set this up here.
You know, what sets this apart, and I under, every zoning board and every board for that matter is always worried about precedent. Precedent doesn't apply to a board if you have differing facts. So here, what we have is, we have an access drive off 250 that's shared with the Penn Field Pub and the other uses, and then we have to go north a little bit to get to our site. The location of the pylon sign there is indicating drivers that, as you're coming down or up Route 250, that the Chick-fil-A is going to be to the northern part of that site or to, of that shopping center. Because no one's going to know this is a separate property, they're going to think it's just one big shopping center. So having it visible from the road is vital for distracted driving, both on 250, but also internal to the site. And as we mentioned earlier, there's no pylon sign at that access location now. So it's vital to have it there, so people know this is the access drive for Chick-fil-A, so that the access drive to the shopping center to the south isn't utilized for Chick-fil-A operations. Not that it won't be, because it's a common development, but...
That's my other, just, and I don't know if this is more of a planning board question, but again, I drive that, I go to Dunkin' Donuts every Friday, we have Donut Friday, and from ESL to Dunkin' Donuts to get to where you are, right? If you pull in where the Starbucks is, it's already a tight pull-in and going straight. Have you guys done any research about how to eliminate from people from using that to your, your...
Using the internal access road there? Yeah, and the, and we have our traffic here, Nick Merrifield, who can talk about it, a couple of things. One is the pylon sign is a huge indicator. I'm not going to pull in here, when I see that pylon sign, however many feet that is up ahead, I'm going to use the new traffic signal. And so that pylon sign is mitigating the exact problem you had mentioned. One is, there was a full traffic impact report done by Pacero Engineering. That has been reviewed by town consultants, as well as the New York State Department of Transportation, and DOT came back with a letter after reviewing the light, saying that the project will not result in any significant traffic impacts. So it's been deemed by the state DOT that that traffic light, that Chick-fil-A will be providing, will be enhancing the, the traffic in this area.
Does the tall pylon sign mitigate the need for as many signs on the building, then? I guess in my mind, that's kind of why the code's always been one on the, one on the building and the one free standing out front, so you can see it from the road. Wouldn't that mitigate some of the, you know, the sign on the front? You know, because from the sign on the front, you would see the one at the street as you're coming in from a much farther distance to know where to go already.
Yeah, I think the pylon sign is mainly for those folks traveling 250. The building signs, you know, from what we're experiencing, are for those traversing internal to the shopping center.
So the sign on the 250 face is for people not traveling 250?
So if they're traveling the access drive, or they are going, you know, on that access drive that you had mentioned that gets tight sometimes, having those building-facing signs, people might see that rather than being so close to the pylon sign and looking up. You don't want them to look up when you're that close to it, because if you're looking up, you're not looking where you're driving. But, and it's also, you know, there's a Starbucks right there, right, signage, consistent with other chain restaurants that are in this area.
Yeah, we, we knocked down a lot of the Starbucks signs, too.
The Starbucks signs?
From what was requested.
Yeah, from what was requested.
We didn't literally go out there and knock...
Man took the hammer out there, and yeah.
I've seen towns do a lot of things, that's not one of them.
Do you think that having the sign that faces, oh, I'm bad at direction, south...
South is down.
... encourages people to utilize the internal accessway and potentially cause more traffic issues there that are unwanted?
I think the, and Nick, correct me if you want to step in here and talk, but I think the building signs are going to assist people getting to the site from the shared access drive. I think the pylon sign is what tells people to go to that northern entrance.
Yeah, he's implying if they're already in the plaza, they're going to see that likely, potentially before they even see the pylon sign.
And that's been our justification in the past when granting special permits similar to this one, so to make travel within the plaza safer. When people see, okay, I think Chick-fil-A or whatever is in this plaza, but where the heck is it? Oh, they see the sign and then they can, as opposed to going down traffic lanes and turning and looking for it, they can see the sign and go to the sign. So, you know, I think we would obviously rather have people use that, or call it the main entrance, that's going to be controlled by a traffic light, but you're going to have some people that are shopping at a lot of the other places, and then deciding to go to Chick-fil-A if this gets approved, and, you know, that sign will help that. Having said that, I just don't see any need thus far for any signs on the north side. You got a pylon sign, so if I'm traveling south on 250, you know, you're going to, you have a lot of trees to the north, which are going to stay, I understand, not going to be affected, so...
That's right.
You're going to see that pylon sign way before, to me, way before you see any building-mounted signs. So, and, and the pylon sign's going to be close to the traffic signal, so you're going to know where to turn, you've already mentioned that, whether you're coming north or south. So, again, I, I haven't seen the, the case for signs to the north, you're not even asking for one on the west, because that's a park, and there's a bunch of trees there, so what purpose would that serve?
What we can do is, we can provide more information on the justification of the building-mounted signs.
In particular, to the north?
Yeah, I agree with that point.
Yeah, I think to the north, and again, we'll provide more information for the board, but it's not very often you see a building, especially a commercial building, that doesn't have a sign of the business at its front door. So it's something we'll certainly look into, and we'll provide additional justifications.
Yeah, and I would just add, the town has requested that we extend the access drive to the north property line, because the, the anticipation is that that will be developed as commercial, it'll be connected to this property, so it'll be a, similar to, you know, the plaza we have on the south, there'll be another business, there'll be internal circulation. So, yeah, I think those...
But there wouldn't be anything stopping you from coming in at that point to ask for another sign on the north face, right? I mean, yeah, that's a good point, but it's not necessarily pertinent to the present.
Then there would, I guess, along that same vein, then there would be no need to provide the connection either. But we've been asked by the town...
It's, it's town planning versus business owner planning.
Right.
So, I get it. Okay, any other, well, yeah, so, so why do the little chicken signs? Why do they have to be 100% logo? Or asked another way, can you shrink the logo so that you can comply more with the code?
So we can provide that information, I don't know if we can shrink the logo. What I will say is, you know, when I saw that requirement in the code, I was trying to think of an example of a sign that is not 100% company insignia. So when you're creating a sign, you know, our customers, Chick-fil-A customers, are familiar with what the insignia, what the logo is, and that's what's going to drive them to the direction of the building. And so, you know, we can provide more information, but then the question becomes, what is, is just the chicken, I suppose it's a rooster? Are we shrinking that, right, to a point where we can't see it? And then we have to make the sign bigger?
That's a fair point, and that's why, if you were to come in and say, well, you know, we, 100%, because all our signs 100%, and we really like how that chicken looks, and, you know, our customers see that chicken and they identify it with our product, I get all that, but we do have a code, and it's there with a certain percentage that this is double. So if, if there were additional... get all that, but we do have a code, and it's there with a certain percentage that this is, is double. So, if, if there were additional, uh, I guess, engineering reasons, again, there's no sense in putting a logo up if nobody could see it, I, I understand that as well. So, if an engineer were to say, hey, if, in order to comply here, we, we could do it, we could build any sign, but to do it, it's gonna render the sign useless. Just, just, you know, we have the same issue with the pylon sign, larger than requested, so we'll ask similar questions in regard to that.
Sure, and one thing I'll highlight, um, and certainly, the board has its own counsel, but it's a difference between a variance and a special use permit here. The code allows this board to do a special use permit for signage in zone, in commercial zoning districts, um, and they do that for a reason, and they do that because they realize commercial entities are going to have more signage than what the zoning code permits. A special use permit is a legislative finding that that use, or that proposed, or this signage, is in harmony with the neighborhood and the zoning district it's in, so long as we meet the special use permit standards that are in your code. So our submission of November 13th outlined what those considerations are, harmony with the community character, um, it is, issues like that. So, you know, we're not looking at this, um, and I know it's hard to differentiate, we're not, we shouldn't be looking at this as a violation of the code, rather, it's something that's permitted as long as we meet the, the special use permit standards.
But the standards, in my mind anyway, are quite similar. I mean, I could read them to you here from the special permit, and, you know, is, is the signage compatible with, you know, and not detrimental to neighborhood properties? Very similar to one of the factors for an area variant. So I, I understand where you're coming from, but again, we have a code that says signs, logo signs, or signs shall not be more than 50% logo. So, you know, arose by any other name, is, to a certain extent, uh, you know, how I'm approaching this, although I do appreciate and understand the distinction, uh, that you're making. So, um, if I'm understanding you correctly, in terms of what information you can provide, we're talking about whether or not your client will go for the, uh, window sticker, let's say. That's one, so far. Another one is this information about if we shrink the, uh, logo, how far can we shrink it and still have an effective sign? And then, we haven't gotten there yet, but, um, well, also, third engineering evidence about the north, the signs on the north. And then, really, the same thing, engineering evidence about the request for a sign larger than permitted on the pole. Because we're gonna, and you know, again, we've, we've seen that, and it certainly makes sense, why bother having a pole sign if it's not going to help identify where the business is? 250, people are traveling, heard your comment about state DOT, we'll get into that as well, but, you know, if an engineer were to come in, or somebody, and, and make a comment about the sign, in order to be effective, needs to be this big, and it happens to be larger than, you know, what's permitted, so you should grant a special permit for that. Right, that's the sort of thing that I'm looking for, and then, of course, there's the factor about, you know, is the proposed signage necessary to adequately identify the business? And, you know, from a, from a user standpoint, from a, a, a traffic standpoint, I think that's a very relevant, um, very relevant issue. Everybody, all commercial folks want as many signs as possible, and they want them as large as possible, for marketing purposes, honestly, I, that's, that's fair, that's, that's, uh, it's not necessarily what other, um, interested parties want, but it's, it's understandable.
Sure.
And, and we've had people come in here and say, we wanna sign that big because we wanna attract as many customers as possible, and honestly, we appreciate the candor when that happens. And, and there, again, nothing, nothing wrong with it.
So as you'll see, the, the sign package is done by AnchorSign. So AnchorSign, um, does sign surveys for Chick-fil-A all across the country, and they have this detailed information. Everyone is different based on location, um, so you'll get that information for the board and submit it for the next meeting.
Okay. So, we can move to the pole sign, if, and we don't have any other questions about the building-mounted ones. So, yeah, right, right into the pole sign, um, let's first talk about its, the, the need to place it in that particular location, resulting in the, uh, the setback issue.
So again, the need is to have it, um, on our property, um, but as close to that intersection as possible, so that people notice to use that northern main entrance where the new light will be. As you can see, the manner, and, and the setback is to that southern property line, it's not to the front yard property line. And you can see how the road turns in there, and, so there's limited area to move it to the north, given the access drive. One of the planning board's concerns early on was that there wasn't enough room between the drive-through exit, where you're gonna make that right turn, and that access drive, so we moved the building over, and the planning board doesn't wanna see the access drive moved over many, anymore, because they wanna see the distance you have proposed there between the exit of the drive-through and the access drive, to allow for more time to turn, make that right turn to exit. So we can't move the, the pylon sign further north, um, because the road dips in there.
Okay. And, uh, again, maybe an engineering question, but how, how wide is the, if we know the pole going to be, um, on which it's mounted? I'm ju, and, and the reason I'm asking that, I've got, I just wanna make sure that there aren't any site issues or anything caused by the pole itself.
I don't know if it's called out there.
Says TBD.
Okay.
That's the size of the hole, I think.
Right, so not, the circumference is not very wide, but again, if you could just address that issue. Okay. So, um, again, the, the, if you wanna reserve the answer, and, because it's all engineering, but why do you need a sign that much larger than the code calls for?
Then, uh, say that again, the last part, how much the-
Why do you need a, a pole sign that large?
Okay.
And by the way, are you going to have signage anywhere else not on your property? Like, is there a tenant sign or anything like that, that, let's say I'm, I'm on 441 traveling east, and I'm coming to the intersection? And I'm looking for Chick-fil-A? There's not gonna be a Chick-fil-A sign up near the corner or anything?
Nope, the signage that is proposed for the project is in the signage package.
And is Chick-fil-A, does, are they gonna own that property, or are they leasing the property from somebody else?
So the way Chick-fil-A operates is, they're currently under a, a lease agreement, um, for the property. They will, those lease agreements are typically for, up to, with extensions, automatic extensions, about 50 to 60 years. They do not own the property that they operate on. Once you get to a point where the building is under construction, the unique thing about Chick-fil-A, and quite honestly, why they're so well-run and always very clean, is that Chick-fil-A hands it over to an owner-operator. They're not gonna, the, the property owner's gonna stay the same. The owner-operator is the person who's responsible for the everyday activities on that project site. Chick-fil-A doesn't allow an owner-operator to own or operate more than one store. There are few instances where one owner-operator will have a maximum of two stores, but that's only years and years of demonstrating, um, you know, great ownership, great operation. And the owner-operator who gets selected at a later date, uh, through a host of applications, is typically someone who's local, um, they'll be engaged in the community, um, through various community events and so forth. And so, having that sole person responsible for one store, and their time isn't spent elsewhere, ensures an efficient functioning of the site.
Okay. So I have some general questions about the application, and, but anybody else have any specific questions?
I just had, um, at the drive-off of, uh, where the intersection will be, I think there's a couple of trees right there, are those staying at the roadside? I think there's like one there, and there's a second one, I think those are, those are basically right where your pylon sign would be blocked by those trees. I'm just curious in terms of the height difference of those trees versus the pylon sign, because I think the pylon sign's only 20 feet tall, and those trees have to be 15 to 18 feet tall at least.
No, some of them are ornamental trees, so they're, yeah, you can look at it, there, you got it, that's where I was heading.
I don't know what we did before street view.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, and that tree looks like it, it's, yeah, I would say it's probably in that 12-foot range, I mean, we would, the intent was to keep that tree, looking at that tree, and I was out there today, but I didn't notice it, but of course, it's winter, um, we would certainly wanna trim that tree and, you know, properly, so that it's, uh, health, make sure it's healthy and, uh, it's pruned properly.
And doesn't interfere with the sign if it goes there, because defeat the purpose?
It seems like it defeats the purpose if those trees block your sign, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, certainly.
Yeah, we'll take a, we'll take a second look at that.
Oh, so any other specific questions? Okay, so I, I just have a couple more general questions. The first one, you've sort of gotten into this a little bit, but can, can you describe what cooperative agreements you have with other, um, neighbors, I guess, tenants in the plaza? You, you've talked, you've talked about the access drive, and, but is there anything else?
So, I'll just highlight for the record that, you know, the shared access agreement and maintenance agreement is one. Certainly, they have no relevancy to the area variances or the signage, um, but there will be a shared access agreement, there's one in place for the gymnastics center, um, through our lease agreement, that would be amended with the plaza shopping owner.
Okay. And then the second area for general discussion, and, is, um, you know, and I guess it would, I'm, I'm not sure which request that would relate to, but, um, I'm also, at the same time, thinking we need to discuss it, and that is, and you've actually brought it up, the issue of traffic. And will this use, and I guess the requests, result in increased traffic on 250 in a manner that, uh, you know, is gonna create a safety concern, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? I mean, you, yeah, perhaps it's more of a planning board issue, but it still is an issue, I think, for us, at least to hear about.
Sure.
You, you brought the gentleman from Passerol, so, um-
Yeah, I, I don't go anywhere without our traffic engineer.
Yeah, it's smart.
So, I'll hand it over to Nick, and yes, that is, you know, a planning board, um, certainly a planning board consideration, and they're taking a deep dive into it.
Yeah.
But from what I understand, the town, uh, when you have two agencies, you each do your own secret review. So we provided the planning board with the entirety of the traffic impact report, as well as the letter from DOT that we got, um, understanding that as part of your secret duties, uh, you know, traffic does need to be assessed. So I'll hand it over to Nick to give a summary of the traffic, the existing traffic, the proposed mitigation, and what it might look like after it's built.
All right, thanks.
So, I'm Nick Merrifield with Passer Associates, and, uh, we completed a comprehensive traffic study for the proposed Chick-fil-A, and as a part of this, we studied the intersections of Penn Field Road and Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, the existing Don's Original driveway and Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, um, then Pembroke Drive and Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, and Whalen Road and Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. We studied these intersections during the weekday midday, the afternoon commuter, and Saturday midday peak hours. In order to figure out the trip generation for the project, we collected data at the three local Chick-fil-A's in Henrietta, Greece, and Aronacote. And based on our analysis, we were able to determine that with the installation of a traffic signal, the project would not, uh, result in a significant adverse impact. Uh, we did look at installing a traffic signal at the Don's Original driveway, as well as, uh, installing it at Pembroke Drive, and based our analysis, we determined that the signal would operate best at the Don's Original driveway.
I'm sorry, just so I understand you, you were never considering traffic lights at both locations?
No, just one or the other.
Yeah, okay, all right.
And, yeah, and like Charlie said, well, Chick-fil-A's willing to pay for both the design and construction of this, uh, traffic signal, and, uh, as also he mentioned, uh, DOT, the New York State DOT sent us a letter stating that they agreed with our findings, that, uh, the Don's Original driveway is the best location for the traffic signal, and that the project does not result in a significant adverse impact.
Okay. All right, and you, um, are retained by the applicant?
Yes.
Right.
So the planning board had, um, the planning board's consultants, Barton Le Judas, I believe, um, they've had these materials, so, you know, I never tell a town to solely listen to us, but the town's traffic consultant and engineer had no substantial comments on the traffic report, and the DOT has given it, it's blessing.
Yeah. So Andy, do you wanna add anything to that, or, I know that we've, I think we've had a letter in the file from, uh-
Yep.
-Barton and Le Judas about that, and I think that's a fair representation, that they concurred in the conclusion of Passerol about this, and certainly for DOT, you know, DOT to, uh, say, hey, a lights, a light will help. So actually, can you get into that a little bit? How, how would a light at that intersection help?
Mostly with just the traffic exiting, uh, the development, where it is, you know, not an insignificant amount of traffic, where it's also just a safety improvement, where we did look at a crash, or we did a crash analysis for the intersection, and did see that there were a couple right-angle crashes with cars struggling to make it on to, uh, Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, and this signal would help alleviate that by providing them specific time to exit the site, uh, and driveway.
Okay. So, do you have, uh, uh, I guess, an actual number of, uh, the time that would be reduced exiting out of that now with a traffic light?
Uh, if you give me a sec.
Let's say specifically, if I were turning north from that exit.
Okay.
Because I imagine that would be, right now, without a light, it's a lot harder to turn left there than it is to turn right.
And while, while Nick's looking for that, another thing I'll point out is, it's not just a light, but there's also pedestrian access facilities and crossings that will be provided.
Uh, where, so, as a part of our analysis, we look at both existing and background conditions, where the background conditions represent the future time, uh, when the project will be completed, but without, uh, the traffic added to the study area. And for that condition, uh, yeah, during the PM peak, there's about a 42.1-second delay, and during the Saturday peak, there's a 51 and a half second delay, with the project and the, you know, decent amount of traffic that is added to the exiting movements, uh, that goes up to about 167 during the seconds during the PM peak, and then, yeah, 821 seconds during the Saturday peak without a signal. But then, once we install the signal, uh, that gets reduced significantly to, uh, yeah, about, you know, 10 to 15 seconds for cars.
The 800 seconds gets reduced to 10 to 15 seconds?
Uh, yes. Or, no, sorry.
That's a fast light?
Yeah, 25 seconds, sorry, I was looking at the wrong number.
Okay, okay, yeah, I just, you know, wanna, but, um, thanks for the numbers, but it would be a fair characterization, I guess, to say that the traffic light there is gonna significantly reduce the time it takes to get out of that plaza.
Yes, for both that plaza and, uh, the medical building.
Across the street.
And as well, it should be noted that, uh, some of the office development to the north, uh, along Pembroke Drive, there is an access to, uh, the medical, uh, property, and they could very easily utilize that to make, uh, yeah, a turn onto 250 as well, and as well also improve the capacity of the Pembroke Drive intersection.
A silly question, are all traffic lights these days, um, censored? Where, like, if you've pulled out of the YMCA, you know that it'll turn when there's a car there?
Yes, where, uh, there's two types of detectors, you know, the ones in the ground, where you can usually see where they are actually cut into the road, and as well, there's newer detectors that are video that are installed on the poles, but yes, the signal would be, and it's called an actuated signal.
Actuated, now I've learned that, actuated, did you know that?
So the data that you used to do your analysis, when did you collect that? If you said it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't think I did, but I can look at that date. Uh, where, yeah, so we used the original, or, for the Fairport Nine Mile Point Road and Penn Field Road intersection, we used that data from the original traffic study in 2022. we used that data from the original traffic study in 2022. But we did apply growth rate to increase those volumes to represent the existing conditions. And then, the other intersections, we collected in March and April of 2024.
Okay, so tell me a little bit about what that growth rate means.
So, pretty much, we look at the history of traffic volumes in the study area. And as well, Monroe County DOT, they have a, you know, memo that they send out that says, like, oh, this is what we recommend for the growth rate to use in a specific town in Monroe County. And based on both that memo and the traffic, yeah, data that we looked at... Hold on one sec. Yeah, we determined that traffic has actually been decreasing historically, but we... We still can't, you know, decrease traffic. We still have to be conservative and apply increasing growth rates. So, we use a half a percent growth rate to increase.
What was the growth rate recommended by Monroe County? Do you know? It can't have been negative, but maybe it was.
No, it's not negative. And actually, sorry, I see we actually use a 0.75% growth rate. And I don't know the number off the top of my head, but it's either a half a percent or, yeah, 3/4 of a percent.
Okay. All right. So, do you believe that the presence of a Chick-fil-A here is going to increase traffic on 250?
Well, certainly, any new development where you're taking a vacant site and putting people has the potential to increase traffic. That's why we hired a traffic engineer to do a traffic impact report and coordinated with the DOT. The question is, can it be mitigated? And that's the secret process. Is there a potential impact? We have to look at that potential impact. We have to mitigate it. And that's what our report demonstrates. And one thing to know about the traffic increase is that we do utilize data from what's, yeah, organization called the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And they release data based on, you know, how many cars are coming from an existing roadway and turning into a fast food development like Chick-fil-A, which is called a pass-by trip, where that traffic is not added to the roadway. It's already on the roadway on its typical commute. It just happens to be going by the Chick-fil-A, and it turns in and continues on their path. And based on that data, we anticipate about half the traffic going to this Chick-fil-A will be that pass-by traffic and will not necessarily be new to the study area.
Okay. And do you consider at all, or did you, in your study, potential traffic increases in the New York State, if you know? Potential traffic increases due to development to the north, let's say, a couple miles?
Yes, so as a part of this, we did, yeah, ask for background projects that are approved for, yeah, the general study area, and we did include every single project that was approved.
Okay. And how about any that are contemplated?
Oh, we do not include those, just because...
Okay, and do we know if New York State did?
They would not, no.
Okay. So, I guess, if that's something that you can opine on is... Because it looks like we're going to end up tabling this to get the information.
Sure. So, if I understand the question correctly, whether or not contemplated theoretical developments that may or may not happen in the future were counted in our traffic assessment?
Or, you know, well, yes. And then, if not, you know, why not? Because frankly, you know, we say contemplated, but there's also reality. And then, there's a lot of space in between those two things.
Sure.
You don't have to travel very far north to see that there have been proposed projects, you know, there may in the future. And the reason I'm getting at it is I just don't want to overlook something.
Sure.
If it can be considered, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask that it, you know, at least be thrown in the pot for consideration. Because what may be a good decision now, when, you know, may affect future development or may turn out to be, oh, jeez, what did we do? You know, and if we don't consider what may happen, then, you know, we're going to...
So, we'll certainly respond in writing, but what I will say is SECRE is the process for all of this. And what SECRE tells us is we can't... SECRE is not a tool to assess developments that are not concrete, that are not applied for, and that may be hypothetical. And so, the way it works is we're in here for our project. We are assessing projects that have been approved, projects that are likely in the approval pipe... That are in the approval pipeline that came before us. Those projects that may or may not come after us, they then have to do their own traffic impact assessment that evaluates Chick-fil-A's traffic and the installation of the new traffic signal that Chick-fil-A is putting in.
Yeah.
So, it's a continuum instead of hypothetical and guessing of what may or may not happen in the future. It's that future applicant's responsibility to assess what is the real world at the time we apply. But I can provide backing for that.
And I hear you, and I understand you, but I confess that there's a part of me as an individual and as part of this zoning board that, you know, again, I should at least ask the question. And if you want to respond to that, you know, great. And then, the other thing I'd ask you to comment on in regard to traffic is on the SECRE. Because one might argue that the traffic really is not sufficiently connected to your request of this board. And therefore, this board's review of the traffic is perhaps more tenuous than I'm... than I think it is. So, I'd like you to... And I won't take offense at anything you say.
No, I... Listen, I've been doing Chick-fil-A land use and develop now for quite a while.
Yeah.
And the first thing they do, and you'll note by the date of the traffic report, is they have a traffic impact report done, pretty much for every project. And while the canopy setback variance, the buffer setback variance, and the parking and the signage isn't going to increase the traffic, I wouldn't come before this board and not expect a traffic question. And I understand it's part of the record. It's good for the record, so we'll seek to answer them as much as possible. But as far as your SECRE determination goes, it is solely limited to the area variance and the signage. The planning board is the one who... They're really, you know, digging their heels in on the traffic and the site design questions. But to the extent we can answer your traffic questions, we've likely already answered them for the planning board, so it certainly can't hurt.
Yes. Okay, great. I appreciate that. And then, does anybody have any other questions on the traffic?
Absolutely not.
So, that's his way of telling me I've asked enough. So, the final question that I'll ask is, because we've seen this and heard this, is I'll try to state the question or the principle or the concern and let you guys respond to that. And it's this. So, yeah, fast food restaurants are conditionally permitted use in this district. Okay. However, this particular location, under the plan that you've submitted, requires so many variances that it's really not the spot for it. So, it... Well...
I think that was a question, not a statement, correct?
Well, I'm not finished.
Okay.
But I do appreciate applause, anything, of course. So, it's not the spot for it. So, this, in essence, amounts to what some people refer to as spot zoning. So, I just want to give you an opportunity to respond to that.
Sure.
I'm not saying that I agree with it, but I'm just saying it's an issue that has been raised and frankly, is going to be raised in a few minutes.
No, we had a... We had a planning board public hearing two weeks or three or so weeks ago in November, and that issue came up. We provided, and like we will do with this board, pointed responses to each comment that was raised by members of the public. And one was the spot zoning issue. We provided legal citation in that planning board response that I'll provide to this board as well, that spot zoning is completely inapplicable to this. Spot zoning is when the legislative board of this town singles out a single piece of property for a different use classification that is not substantially similar to its surrounding character nor supported by the comprehensive plan. It has nothing to do with area variances. This board is only... We are only seeking relief for three area variances. Originally, four, taking it down to three. I'm sure you've had several projects before you that have asked for more area variances than that. Certainly, I have seen projects with more area variances than that. There are a line of cases out there that do talk about when there are such a significant amount of area variances. The question is not spot zoning, because that's completely inapplicable, but do the area variances change the character of the neighborhood so much that maybe the town board should make a zoning change or something? And so, we address that before the planning board as well, and we'll do the same. Here, we're not doing a use that is different than any other use in this zoning district. There's a Starbucks right there. And the area variances that we're requesting, reducing off-street parking, limited setbacks, those aren't substantially changing the character of the neighborhood to the extent that we're developing irregardless of the zoning code. One of our setbacks is adjacent, a commercial shopping center. One of our setbacks is improving an existing non-conformity. One of our setbacks is ensuring that we're not paving multiple acres of property to provide 181 parking spaces. So, these requested variances don't rise to that level. And we'll provide the ZBA with the same legal citations that we provided the planning board in our next submission.
Thank you. Andy, in the interim between meetings, would you... I suppose I could just watch the video from the prior application, but I'm interested in knowing if there were any concerns or opposition expressed to that... To those requests two, three years ago, you know, in our record. Okay. All right.
And I will say, we did receive moments before the meeting started, comment letter from some of the residents have retained counsel. And so, with our next submission, you know, I was flipping through it on my phone because we got it so late. We will provide pointed responses to each of their comments and concerns. It looked quite lengthy as I was reviewing it on my phone.
Okay. Very good. So, any other questions from anyone of the applicant? All right. So, before we ask folks in person for their comments, I would just remind anyone that happens to be watching, first, that maybe they would like to call and make a comment. They can do so by calling 340-8771 and/or can comment, make an electronic comment, which, oh, we have a couple here. So, folks, everyone in the room, remind me to read these, because we will go first to folks in the audience. All right. So, thank you for making space. So, I do have a number of folks that have signed up to speak. I'm not sure what order they signed up, so I'm just going to take them in order that they appear. So, first that I have here is Jacob Zoglin Esquire.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if I've ever had a chair pronounce my name correctly before on the first try.
Well, you must be related to Mindy.
Yes, I am.
So...
Fortunately for me.
Yes, excellent attorney.
If I may approach the board, I have courtesy copies of the written submission that I provided today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Boy, it is lengthy. Who said that? You were right.
Well, it comes with...
I'm kidding you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is this auto on? Okay, auto on. Great. And I can provide contact information for the record as well. So, I'll first go through my prepared remarks. I have some notes that I'll breeze through. And then, I have some notes I've taken regarding comments by the developer, and I'll try to get through those pretty quickly, too, so as not to take up too much time. Good evening. My name is Jacob Zoglin. I'm an attorney and partner of the Zoglin Group here in Rochester. And I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Preserve Penfield in opposition to the Chick-fil-A applications for area variances and special use permits. Tonight, I'm going to try to limit my focus to three issues for why developers' application should be denied. And I ask that you refer to my written submission for additional facts and reasons that warrant denial of the application. First, SECRE is not yet complete, and so the ZBA cannot approve the application yet. Because the proposed project requires multiple approvals from multiple boards, SECRE requires that the applicant be subject to coordinated review, which will reveal that a positive declaration of an environmental significance is required and that an environmental impact study... I'm sorry, environmental impact study must be prepared, statement. Now, because multiple approvals are required from multiple boards, the ZBA should participate in this coordinated review, consider all approvals necessary for the project, as well as the project as a whole, in determining whether adverse impacts may result. Now, this requires asking involved agencies for comment, too. It's my understanding that process may have already started. Now, the SECRE review must consider the fact that a conditional use permit cannot be granted for a takeout restaurant use at this property because the site is located within a limited business district that is also subject to the Route 441-250 overlay district. That is extremely significant here because takeout restaurants are not permitted, either as of right or with a conditional use permit in the Route 441-250 overlay district when that overlay district coincides with a limited business district, as it does here. And so, a use variance, not a conditional use permit, is required. That use variance should come before this board, the ZBA. The SECRE review will show that this project is inconsistent with community plans and goals, including the comprehensive plan, the town code, the town's New York Route 250 corridor improvement plan dated January 2024, which is attached as exhibit to our written submission. And it would show that the project would exacerbate failing levels of service in this vital area of the town. These impacts must be reviewed and mitigated as part of the coordinated review. And if you take a look at our written submissions, they refer both to the New York Route 250 corridor improvement plan, which was prepared by the town's consultant at the request of the town in January of 2024. So, it is extremely relevant and also uses analysis from the Passaro report to reach that conclusion. Next, I'll move on to the area variance factors. The area variances should be denied because the benefit to the applicant is clearly outweighed by the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community if this were granted. Moreover, if we go through the five statutory factors, that analysis also weighs against granting the variances. The project will introduce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood by allowing an extremely intensive takeout restaurant use to be significantly closer to the town parkland and trail system than is permitted under the town code and to operate with less than half of the parking that is required at such property. This is also inconsistent with the comp plan and the 250 improvement plan. It will cause adverse impacts related to traffic in the neighborhood as more fully laid out in our written submission, which shows that it will exacerbate, make worse, failing levels of service in this critical area, which is exactly why the 250 improvement plan was created, to avoid this type of result.
What do you mean failing levels of service?
So, when you're talking traffic analysis, it gets graded like a high school paper. You know, A would be the best, and F would be the worst. And there are several areas here that have E or F failing levels of service. And the analysis shows that in some cases, those levels of service would be made worse by this project, not better. Moving on to the next factor of analysis, the benefit of a drive-through could easily be obtained... easily, easily be obtained without a variance by reducing the footprint of the building, eliminating some of the drive lanes, or eliminating the canopy. You can reduce the square footage of the building. There are lots of ways to, you know, skin the cat here, and maximizing profit is just not a good reason to grant a variance. It's not one of the factors. And so, if they can obtain the variance, sorry, obtain the benefit of a drive-through without variance by reducing the size of the restaurant or one of the other changes I proposed, those changes should be made. Next to the substantiality of the variances, these variances are incredibly substantial, because they would allow fewer than 50% of the parking spaces required at the site, which is a legislative determination about how many parking spaces are required. The town board set this in the town code, and for the developer to come in here and say that that's wrong is not their place. The town board makes that determination.
Isn't that the whole point of seeking a variance, though? I mean, under that, under that analysis, nobody should ever come and seek a variance.
Not exactly. It just means that when considering what the, whether it's substantial, you look at how great of a reduction below what is set by the town, and then you perform the five-factor balancing test.
Right, but you are, you are saying that the part, the number of parking was set by the legislator, and the developer should never come in and seek a reduction for the number of parking?
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying they said that it was inappropriate, it was wrong, it's outdated. That determination is the town board's determination, not the developer's.
I probably was the one that said.
So, your, so your issue is how they asked for it, not that they asked for it?
No, I'm, what I'm saying is that their, their determination that you don't need this many parking spaces for this many uses is their opinion, but the legislative determination of the town board is entitled to deference.
So, I don't think they used the word opinion. I think they brought analysis to the board, and it's in the package that states, based on the other Chick-fil-A locations, this amount of parking was the valid amount for what they needed for that location. So, I don't believe they provided an opinion. I believe they provided substantiated facts as to the, the other locations and how they were used, and the amount of parking that was necessary. So, yeah, just, I don't, I don't like the word opinion.
I take your point. They provided an analysis. They believed that that parking wasn't necessary, but their belief is inconsistent with the town board's legislative determination about how many parking spaces are required for this use. That's all I'm trying to say. And, and so, by, by reducing it to 50% below what's required, and reducing the required setback with respect to the residential area by almost 15 feet, which is about 30%, these are substantial. And, and these variances are greater than other variances that courts have also deemed substantial. So, when considering the, these variances cumulatively with other relief requested and required here, these variances become really substantial and weigh against the grant of the variance. Now, I, I take your point as to, you know, what is substantial, what's not, because it's kind of hard to get your hands around, but I provided case citations of several area variances that were deemed substantial, that were not as great as the variances sought here, either in number or in magnitude. Finally, the alleged difficulty is self-created, because the developer acquired property or is seeking to lease property, and now seeks relief from existing code provisions, which the courts have deemed to constitute a self-created hardship. It's the epitome of a self-created hardship. You know that the code says what it says, and you undertake a, a proposed use or area layout that is inconsistent with the code. That is, that is purely what a self-created hardship is, and to blame the hardship on the existence of the code is kind of backwards. So, we have some good case law in there as well. Now, third, I want to address the special use permit for signage. That should be denied as well, because it does not satisfy the requirements for such relief under the town code. Now, I'll go through those, the analysis that the town code requires, which is the proposed signs, which the developer wants to be bigger, to cover more of the face of the sign, to be closer to lot lines, and to have more building-mounted signs, would not be in harmony with the code, which is one of the analysis factors that the code says we need to do for this type of special use permit. The signage would overwhelm the visual balance of this area, and clash with the scale of surrounding signage, and undermine the aesthetic integrity of this area, which encompasses a town parkland and trail system. The proposed sign is not compatible with neighboring properties or the town plans or codes. They include excessively large or oversized signs that detract from the character of the neighborhood, especially in situations like this, where they're out of scale with nearby structures. A sign that is too large or positioned improperly dominates the surrounding area and overshadows smaller, more modest signs that might be associated with the parkland or trail system, the businesses, or the residential properties. There's also potential for the proposed sign to create a hazard to the public, particularly because it would exceed the maximum allowable setbacks and extend too close to property lines. A larger sign, or one with improper setbacks, could obstruct sightlines, as I believe the board maybe alluded to, for drivers or pedestrians, creating safety concerns for both the public and adjacent properties. The proposed sign, by exceeding the size and coverage limitations, is likely to interfere with the public's lawful enjoyment of the area. A sign that is too, a sign that is too large or out of scale could obscure scenic views, create visual clutter, and detract from the overall appeal of the neighborhood. This is a really big problem for a project adjacent to town parkland and trail systems, where, quite frankly, aesthetics and scenic views are extremely important. Finally, there is no reason to give Chick-fil-A an advantage over other businesses in the area, particularly whereas here, the project would be visible to the public, and the signs and color scheme of this nationwide chain are well-known and recognized. The relief requested is simply not necessary to adequately identify this business, and the town code says that that should be one of the things that you look at. For these reasons, the special use permit for signage should also be denied, and for all the reasons I've stated tonight, as well as in my written submissions. A pos deck should be issued, an EIS should be required, and the developer's application should be denied. Now, before I wrap up for this evening, I did take some notes regarding some statements by the developer. The developer made a point of emphasizing that Chick-fil-A has a lot of drive-through customers. He mentioned numerically alone, sure, it's substantial. The fact that it has a lot of drive-through customers reinforces the conclusion and analysis in our written submission that this is not a sit-down restaurant, but a take-out restaurant. And that's a significant distinction made in the town code. There's actually a definition for sit-down restaurant, and the town code says sometimes sit-down and take-out restaurants are permitted in certain places, and sometimes they're not. And this is one of those places, the LB district with the overlay for the 441-250. Next, the, the developer claims that there's not going to be impact on the neighborhood, and in doing that, he references previous approvals related to a different Chick-fil-A that was never constructed, that was at a different property, subject to a different district, without the overlay district, that had a different plan, and had different impacts. Frankly, and, and I believe the developer's attorney admitted this, where the facts are different and the records different, you're not bound by precedent that is inapplicable, right? That, that previous approval for a different property in a different zone without the overlay district, with a different setup, is simply not applicable and does not bind this board. You can make your own decision based on the facts and the record. Next, in discussing the parking requirements, one of the things that I believe was omitted, you know, there's a lot of talk of, oh, things have changed, you know, people don't, you know, go into these restaurants. Well, that's not entirely true, because, you know, one of the things that's changed is that there's a lot of delivery services available, whether that's Grubhub, Uber Eats, DoorDash. I guess that was free advertising for all of them. But, but, you know, this doesn't anticipate the fact that lots of those types of delivery services involve driving to a restaurant. This is a, a unique trip, not a drive-through trip, you know, to the, to traffic people's concern, point. And then they, if, if it's not ready, they have to park and wait. So, you know, they're saying that, you know, times have changed that should impact how traffic and parking is considered. Yeah, it cuts both ways, though, and some of those changes mean that parking still is required for the new types of uses, like the, like the delivery services. They discussed wanting the signs to be recognizable, but simply brand recognition alone is not a reason to grant a special use permit for signage. You know, I, I think the, the board kind of recognizes that, that, you know, it's not necessary to have a giant picture of a chicken in order to know that this is Chick-fil-A, because they've already got signs and branding. So, the, the, there was some discussion about what a special use permit is, and it, you know, a special use permit is a determination that something is acceptable if it meets the criteria for a special use permit under the code. It's not that it's acceptable, you know, completely, you know, without reference to the rest of the facts. We still do the special use permit analysis, you know, and whether that's similar to use variant, or area variance analysis or not, we still have to do the analysis that is required under the code and the factors that the code requires. And so, it's not just automatic here. You still have to look at it, and when you look at the factors that are required, it there, it shows some inconsistencies, both with the town code, the comprehensive plan, and it's just out of harmony with what else is there. I don't want to belabor this point, because I do analyze it in greater depth in our written submission, but I just wanted to make that point for the boards, for the board. Now, I've, I've already gone over what I believe is the normally, you know, five minutes for the public. I do appreciate, no, you guys don't do a five-minute? Appreciate that even more.
We might start one tonight, though. How about that? No.
I take that as a compliment.
Keep going. If you need to make points, go ahead.
No, I, I, I guess the, the only other thing I'll, I'll say tonight is.
But you, by the way, just did the same thing he did. You said no.
And then answered, yeah. They're lawyer. They're lawyer.
We, we attended the same first day of law school. No, we didn't. I don't want to belabor the points. We do have the, the traffic analysis in here. I would like the, the board to take a look at that, and also consider, when you're doing Seeker, the project as a whole and not merely limited by what is before the board tonight. You know, as, as the applicant indicated, you know, each board has to make their own findings under Seeker as well. Are there any questions from the board?
Yeah, I, I'd ask you to consult with your client, because I don't want to make any demands here that would require your clients to spend money. But, I'd ask, if, if there isn't, if the items from your notes aren't already in your written submission, if you could submit something in writing about them. And, and one thing that I'd ask you to expand on, in, in the writing, is you've, you've used the term neighborhood a lot, because the code uses it, and the standards use it. But, a reaction I have to that is, a typical citizen may look at this area and say, this is one of five commercial neighborhoods in the entire town of Penfield. So, yeah, I get the argument that you're making about there's a park next door, but there's already a plaza next to the park, and it's a big plaza, and it's been there for years. There's a row of trees. So, you know, what is the neighborhood here? Is it the homes to the north? Is it the apartments across the street? Or is it the 20 restaurants, or whatever numbers and stores that we have to the, to the south and to the east? So, I think that's, you know, what definition of neighborhood we're using is germane to all of the issues that everybody brings up. So, if you would comment on that in your upcoming written submission, I, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I, I take your point very seriously, because this is a complicated one. You have a, a limited business district where the property is located, that's subject to the overlay district for the 441-250 corridor, which means you have to take the existing zoning for LB, and then also look at the zoning for the overlay district. That, that, you know, the, the town board thought of this as, okay, well, we have this thing, and it's, it's, we're, we're moving from the commercial that's, you know, more to the, you know, east, south, southeast, and we're moving in a less dense direction as we move towards the town park and the residential to the west and northwest. This property is essentially bounded on two sides by the park to the west, and, you know, if you actually, I can provide, I'll, I'll enter this into the record as well. Here's a bunch of maps that are official town code maps that show, I'll, I'll just give them to your attorney. The GIS shows that the green space for the parkland, would it help if I showed the board?
Go free, please. I just want to make sure you're being captured, so to speak, on the mic, or they'll yell at us.
So, this shows the town board, the town park immediately to the west of the property, and also shores, shows the green space associated with the trail system for the park extending to the north, almost along the entire northern property line of the proposed project. So, this is an extremely sensitive area because of the parkland and the trails, and those are very much a part of the neighborhood character that needs to be considered here. So, you know, I, I don't mean to be coy when I say that, you know, the neighborhood is inclusive of the residential, it's inclusive of the park.
Well, that's, that's why I asked you the question, but I do think it's also fair to say, you don't have to agree with me, but this area, 250 and 441, is considered by many people to be a commercial area. And there's a lot of people that would say, if there's going to be a Chick-fil-A, if, then why wouldn't it go in a commercial area?
And I guess the only.
When there are other restaurants and stores and, and again, I'm just, that's what led me to ask you the question about, elucidate a little bit on your, you know, what do you mean by neighborhood when you use it? What does, what does a statue mean? What does Seeker mean? What are all these things? What, what is the neighborhood about which we're talking?
And, and that's why I mentioned the fact that those other drive-through take-out restaurants are not subject to the, to the overlay district, and, and that's significant here in talking about the neighborhood and the impacts in this area.
Okay.
And it's also, the, the code talks about neighborhood, it also talks about districts, and it also talks about impacts on adjacent properties. And it's, it's appropriate for this board to consider all of those things, the impacts on the neighborhood, however, you know, we talk about that, the impacts on the district, right? We're talking about both the LB district and the overlay district, and the impacts and detriment to adjacent properties.
Okay. Great.
Any other questions from the board?
All right.
Thank you very much. And I would ask that those maps also be entered in the record of this proceeding, as well as the planning board proceeding. Thank you.
All right. I said before that I was just going to call out folks in the order that I have here, but I don't know if everybody knows each other or not, but if there's any person that sort of wants to go next, because you have to or want to be somewhere else, I'm glad to allow that. So, if anybody, you want to talk amongst yourselves to see that everybody's in for the long haul, we're okay? All right. The next person that I have is Anthony Perone.
Mr. Chairman, you're two-for-two on easily mispronounced names. Thank you.
Really? Perone? That's a tough one. How do you pronounce my last name?
DeLaus?
Wrong.
I'm sympathetic.
But, but a mistake often made. So, my father, God rest his soul, used to always say it's DeLos. I've added to that, it's DeLos, like Santa Claus, if you will, germane to this time of the year. So, I expect no one in this room to ever call me DeLaus again, okay?
DeLos.
There you go.
You can tell someone who's really had to deal with it, because they have a mnemonic ready and at hand.
Although, one of my college professors pointed at my name on a name tag one time and said, that's Latin for. and said, "That's Latin for of praise, laudare." So, if you want to call me Dan of Praise, feel free. Anyway, go ahead. You're here to talk about Chick-fil-A. Did you get that one on film?
This is all on the public record. You're killing it.
Yeah.
My name is Anthony Perone. I live at 1935 Dublin Road, just to get that out of the way. I prepared my statement with respect to the November 13th filing, so that's a little out of date now, as I understand, they're asking for a different set of variances. So I'm gonna try to mash together my prepared statement with some ad libbing and off-the-cuff things, and we'll see how that goes, if I can avoid stuttering too much. To begin with, I want to address a couple of things. The question of the neighborhood, I do think it is relevant that this is specifically within a limited business district, which by the wording of the town code exists because it's on the edge of a business area, not in the middle of it. And so this district exists to kind of define that near the outskirts where business meets residential, which is inevitable in any sort of suburban community where that's pretty much all we got. Near the edges of a business district, you want to do something that's a little less intense than the rest of the business district. And frankly, you know, the sort of business that makes headlines for its traffic disruptions, even if it's only within the first opening months, counts as pretty intense. It's not like a light thing, this is not like a dentist office or a law office or any one of the permissible uses for the zone, this is a, you know, well-traveled restaurant that's going to draw people from many surrounding towns, the nearest ones in Arundecoyt. So everyone from Walworth and Fairport is gonna come here to get their chicken fix, present company notwithstanding. I also want to mention the Pacero traffic study, which was extensive with more appendices than I care to think about. It was rather daunting. I did have a couple of questions on that. One was that in their analysis of impact of potential accidents, you know, the, the study overall examined four intersections ranging from the 441-250 intersection up to the intersection of 250 and Wayland Road. But actually, those two at the extents were not, I don't think they were mentioned in the traffic or in the accident impact portion. And certainly, all the traffic that gets to this new light has to pass through one of those. And I, so I would think they're relevant for accidents because, you know, even if the traffic delays are mitigated by the light, traffic volume is still going to increase and, you know, accident rates scale with traffic volume. I also take issue with a note in that report stating that residents of Pembroke could take advantage of the light by accessing it, and we can see on the map in front of us now, to access the traffic light from Pembroke would require meandering through two distinct parking lots, one of which contains the pickup and drop-off lane for a medical clinic. When I think of, you know, Grandma coming out from her checkup, I don't think a lot of traffic passing by is really great for that. So, I know traffic isn't necessarily this board's purview, and I swear eventually I get to my prepared statements that are totally about variances, that's under your purview. But if we're gonna consider those off-topic things, do read that report closely. Only the first 10 pages are like the analysis, so don't be daunted by the thickness of the packet. All right, launching into my prepared statements. The variances requested for the proposed Chick-fil-A drive-through restaurant are excessive and unreasonable, and I urge this board not to approve them. The requested setback variance along the south property line is substantial and detrimental to neighboring properties. It would place a canopy structure the size of a generous suburban home less than eight feet from the property line. And though I agree with the applicant's assertion that this canopy is different in nature than a walled commercial building, that's because I think it's far worse. Its purpose is to shelter a line of idling vehicles attracted by this business, placing all the noise, exhaust pollution, and potentially leaking fluids within literal spitting distance of the property line. I did Google world record spitting to make sure that that statement was accurate, because I know I'm in front of some number of attorneys here. The applicant also asserts that the benefits granted by this variance are not achievable by any other means. I find this claim somewhat suspect since the developer plans to remove all pre-existing structures, providing them with maximum design flexibility. If, given a near infinite domain of possible design permutations, one still cannot be found that doesn't fumigate neighboring parcels, then perhaps this is just not the right property for this business. My next section was invalidated because they're no longer asking for land coverage variances, but the buffer variance is of concern to me. I appreciate that the property line that they're asking for a buffer variance near isn't near houses, there's not gonna be people sleeping nearby, but it is near a public park, happens to be one where my own children play, and my daughter goes to Harris Hill Elementary School. They're gonna be placing, again, a drive-through lane, a double drive-through, triple drive-through lane closer to that property line than is allowed by law, and that's a place where children play. And do we want them to have to play in a cloud of exhaust smoke? Do they want them to play while listening to the squawking of the drive-through speakers or whatever else comes up? Someone who wants to really rock out in the drive-through lane? Do we want that noise pollution and whatever the heck they're listening to to be overheard by, you know, the community's children? I do think that that variance is impactful. I do think it is significant. Substantial is the word I'm looking for, as defined by code. It's not something to be overlooked. Most egregious by the numbers, at least, is the requested signage permit. It is simply unreasonable to attempt to call the requested signage harmonious or within the spirit of the zoning when they're asking for a pylon sign two and a half times the allowed size and for a wall signage that's quadruple what's allowed. If the code is assumed to represent the limits of what is aesthetically acceptable, such an increase is simply beyond the pale. Comparisons to existing signage to the south should be disregarded as those signs are nearly a quarter mile further from the nearest residential property. The applicant disingenuously asserts that these signs are necessary for potential customers to identify the business, yet nearly half the pylon sign is devoted to a reader board display and the reminder that they're closed on Sundays. What's more, none of the building-mounted signs are visible from an approaching angle where one couldn't also see the pylon sign. If nothing else, the drive-through and odor of fried chicken will surely let a passerby know what they're in for. Lastly, the applicant repeatedly refers to previous permits granted for proposal at 2130 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. That parcel is zoned for general business, making it a poor comparison. The current proposal falls, as has been discussed, within a limited business zone and more restrictively within the routes 441-250 overlay district, where fast food restaurants are not among or even similar to the potential conditional uses. Nothing that lets a lot of cars idling at it is allowed in that zone. Car washes, mechanic shops, nothing that has a lot of moving traffic of vehicles that are running is allowed in that district. We should not be glamored by one developer's pitch to revitalize an abandoned lot. Of course, a functioning business is preferable to a vacant building, but we can do better. Though they say a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush, we should consider whether we're trading two turtle doves for a vulture. Thank you.
Before, before you leave, I'll ask you, because you probably know, but does anybody know how long that building's been vacant?
They closed right after, like, 2021, 2021. My kids went to there.
Okay.
They closed during COVID and then they officially, like, a year later set out and no.
Never, never reopened. All right. Okay, good. Any questions from, or from Mr. Perone?
No, no.
Thank you. All right, I'm, again, gonna keep going. I gave you guys a chance. Wow. I know.
You're, you're gonna lose your.
It's script, that's why, or is that what you call handwriting? Cursive, thank you. Laura Payne? Yeah. What's the last part?
Borsey.
There you go. Really? I thought my handwriting was bad.
My name is Laura Payne Borsey. I live at 8 Parham Drive. I live in the neighborhood. I personally delivered 230 flyers to Pembroke, letting them know of this proceeding and our intent to oppose. Our is preserve Penfield. We are a Department of State-recognized 501(c)(4). We have officers. I am the vice president. So I speak on behalf of that organization as well as someone who lives in the affected neighborhood. I really want to make one very simple point tonight. I've been told that the town of Penfield is risk adverse. The risk adverse to tell developers? No. Because they don't want to be perceived as being arbitrary or capricious. Let me tell you what is more arbitrary and capricious. Approving something that doesn't in any way make sense with your zoning, with your overlay district, with your code, or with state laws. We're not going anywhere. Our attorney's not going anywhere. This will not be the last time we probably appear before this board or the planning board or the town board. Thank you.
Hold on a second, if you don't mind. Anybody have any, anybody have any questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry to yell at you like that. All right, next is Michael Kratzick. Wow, said like three for three.
Another winner of a, of a last name.
Yeah. Almost as big a winner as the Buffalo Bills.
I tried to get this bigger, but I, hi.
Hi.
My name is Michael Kratzick. I live at 55 Random Knolls Drive, which is just off the corner of Wayland and 250. So indeed, this is my neighborhood. I go hiking there, I'll go walking to the post office, I'll even walk up to the urgent care center that I had to go to a couple of weeks back. So, when we talk about the neighborhood, we need to consider where the people live and where the people enjoy being there. And indeed, this is a neighborhood composed of people in Pembroke, of people in Random Knolls, of people in Shire Court. We are all affected by what happens in that area, and we are indeed all affected by the traffic that this particular development will create. The first thing, before I get into the traffic, and perhaps this is a planning board question, but I'm here and I have never been here in all the 40 years I've been to Pen, Penfield, I've never come before, you folks asking for anything. And my basic question is, where's the need for this? Who has determined that indeed a Chick-fil-A is needed in that property? We already have five restaurants where somebody could buy chicken if they need to. So we have McDonald's, we have Burger King, we have the Penfield Pub, we have Wegmans, and there was one more that I was, oh, Taco Bell. Did I miss one?
Chick Magnet.
Oh, Chick Magnet, yeah, just, just down the street. So, my question is, oh, and Five Guys, yes. So my question is, where is the need? There are certain things that indeed are needed in Penfield desperately. One of those is senior living and affordable senior housing, where the wait is two years to try and get into the existing housing. However, that's a discussion for the Willow Pond issue, so I won't pursue that anymore now. So my question is, where's the need? My conclusion as a neighbor who has lived there for 40 years is, there is no need. Other than the name, Chick-fil-A, there is nothing particularly unique or attractive about this restaurant in the way of food that I cannot currently get in the area as it is. As others have mentioned, I'd just like to go ahead and reference the issue of traffic. And for that, I will turn to the current authority du jour of artificial intelligence. I did a quick search about Chick-fil-A and traffic problems, and this is what I found. Chick-fil-A restaurants can cause traffic problems due to their popularity and long drive-through lanes. This particular proposal has three drive-through lanes. Chick-fil-A restaurants are among the busiest in the USA, and some serve over 100 cars during peak hours. Lines can spill onto city streets and create hazardous conditions for pedestrians, cyclists, and people with disabilities. A 2023 study found that Chick-fil-A has the slowest drive-through of the 10 major U.S. chains due to its popularity along lines. Some cities have ordered, ordered Chick-fil-A restaurants to be demolished and rebuilt to address traffic issues, and I won't go into the rest, the rest of this. So, the issue of the number of parking spaces, numerically, we've sort of calculated that number ought to be about 125. Now, even if not everybody drives, let's say for sake of argument, that number should be 100. That's still 20 more than is currently in the proposal. In addition, the attorneys have already pointed out the fact that perhaps people from Harris Wayland Park will come over to Chick-fil-A for, for meals or for whatever value they place during various kinds of events. That is only going to add to the congestion, and the long lines for people waiting to be served will force people either into the driveway, the drive-throughs who cannot get into the restaurant, or will force them onto the adjoining roads. The last point I'd like to make out is this issue of the bypass road that currently runs by Starbucks and the, the oil-changing facility. Now, anybody who thinks that people will see the sign when they can go through that little bypass and go ahead and wait in line at a traffic light is kidding themselves. People will avoid traffic lights to, as best that they possibly can. So indeed, people will be forced onto those bypass roads, which will only create further congestion on the cross-traffic of people trying to get through those roads and people trying to drive through from the stoplights. Those are my comments. Thank you for listening.
Okay, any questions of this chairman?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Eileen Anderson. It's an easy one.
This is my first zoning meeting.
Wow.
I've lived in Penfield 31 years. I thought about it during Wickham Farms, but I didn't come. I had other issues at home. This is my neighborhood. I live on 50 Edenfield Road. I walk to the plazas for my grocery shopping or bike. I go to Harris Wayland Park Trails to hike. I know the traffic. I drive through the parking lots to get to the stores. And I've been on that road in the mornings where you can't even get through to buy Starbucks because they're lined up there to get into the drive-through lane. When I go to that plaza, and I live north of the plaza, and I'm driving, I always go out by the gymnastics training center because to go out further to the 441 and 250 intersection, there is even more traffic and more confusion with people coming and going every which way. So you're gonna get traffic from that whole plaza, my guess is, to go to the stoplight. I, I don't believe him about people not liking stoplights. I like stoplights. But anyways, it's all anecdotal, it's all based on where I live and my experience is in that neighborhood and my experience with Chick-fil-A. I've been to Chick-fil-A once in Greece. It was a disaster. First of all, we couldn't find a parking space, and there were cars backed up in the parking lot trying to get into the drive-through. Then we got into the restaurant, we ordered our food after we found a parking space, and there were people milling around, waiting for a table. So, and this was probably last spring. They said, at the planning board, they said the. They said, at the planning board, they said the Greece store was not built to the...
A mistake, if you will.
A mistake. They had issues with it. Who's to say they're not going to have issues with this one? Three lanes. And I'm just concerned that it's going to be too much for the site and for the area and visual pollution. And it's in a buffer area. And you're just encroaching and encroaching and encroaching on the neighborhood where people live and the park. And it is right up the street from that access point to Harris Wayland Park and the trails. So that's all I have to say. Oh! And Passaro, the traffic analysis engineer for the developer is the same traffic analysis engineer as the town of Penfield. Is there a conflict there? Are they really represent... If we ask our traffic engineer Passaro to look over this traffic report, are they going to give us an honest opinion? Or are they going to give us what they sold to the developer? I think there's some issues there, and we shouldn't have our traffic engineers doing work for private organizations for our town because I see a conflict of interest there. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Any questions?
Questions.
No. I want to give everybody a chance. Thank you.
Okay.
Donna Spinella.
I've got the thousand here for the names.
Well.
Oops. Hi, my name's Donna Spinella. I live at 39 Scarborough Park. I want just to first make two very brief comments, somewhat of a contrast to what counsel for Chick-fil-A has offered up. I'll keep them super brief and then get to my third primary point. With respect to the pylon sign, I personally have my doubts that this is so much an issue of safety as it is an issue of marketing and promotion. And I would ask all of you guys to consider that what would the outcome be if every business in Penfield that could in fact have a pylon sign, in fact, requested one? And you had already given one here. So just kind of tuck that thought away because there are plenty more businesses that I'm sure would be allowed to have them if they chose to have them. And think about what that does to the kind of the look and feel, the character of the town.
Do you mind if I interrupt you for a moment there?
Yeah.
Because I want to make sure I'm understanding when you say if they're allowed to have one. And I... What is the... Succinctly, what is the code? I mean, the request here is not for a sign. It's for a larger sign and then the location. So it's not that they're asking us, can we have a sign? It's can we have this?
Right. That's the type of sign I'm talking about.
All right.
A big giant...
No need.
A big giant pylon sign.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Secondly, with respect to whether something is or is not spot zoning, which Mr. DeLaus, you very nicely pointed out, and I pointed out at one of the planning board meetings. Although du jouré, it may not fall technically as spot zoning to come into a district and ask for lots of variances or special use permits. De facto, it becomes spot zoning. If it walks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's a duck. And I don't think, you know, we need to go into very deep analysis to all say we've encountered these types of situations that technically by law might be able to squeak in, but in a practical sense, do not fit a certain situation. Now, sort of the meat and potatoes. For this, I'll put my glasses on. I was struck by counsel's comment, and I'll quote, I'll do the air quotes. "We're learning as we go" with respect to building these Chick-fil-A facilities in this part of the country, which is pretty much exactly what the gentleman who was from Chick-fil-A, who was at the most recent or one of the most recent planning board meetings, said when asked about the problems with Greece, with the Greece location. But this isn't a problem just with Greece or with this particular site in Penfield. It's endemic. There are 3,059 Chick-fil-A's operational in the U.S. as of one year ago. And yet, they say, "We're learning as we go." I find that very challenging. I find that very difficult to believe. There is a habit, let's just say, of squeezing things in to properties that are either not large enough or just not well-sighted for that type of business for other types, for other reasons. Traffic and proximity to other types of businesses and so forth. A gentleman before me pointed out that some Chick-fil-A's had to be tore down. The one that really made all the news was in Charlotte, North Carolina, where Chick-fil-A was required by the Charlotte government officials to tear down the building, the turning lanes, the drive-through lanes, the whole kit and caboodle, and build over from scratch. In Santa Barbara, they had to rip out all of their drive-through lanes because the lines, the queuing was so bad and so dangerous and just much more than would have been expected well beyond the time period of that grand opening, you know, sort of melee. Chick-fil-A has been sued in Ohio, Texas, and New Jersey by adjacent property owners. So it's not just residents. It's all types of property owners who sort of bear some of this burden. According to an article in the business publication Insider that some of you may be familiar with, they did research in 2021 that showed business complaints, police intervention, and significant traffic problems linked to Chick-fil-A's drive-throughs across more than 20 states in recent years. And I quote from their article. So to say, "We're learning as we go," is a little tough, I think, to believe. I implore you, as leadership within this town, this board, the planning board, the town board, to learn the lessons from these numerous other Chick-fil-A issues that the company themselves seem either not to have learned or chosen to ignore because it's preferable, apparently, to focus on the bottom line and allow the cost shifting of consequences like traffic and safety fall to residents and fall to local businesses. So those are the end of my comments.
Okay. Any questions?
No. No.
Thank you very much. So let me make sure no one's on... No one is online with a phone. We have two electronic comments. I'll get closer so I can read them. I'll take my glasses off.
Your mic.
Microphone.
You need your mic.
You need your mic.
Thank you. First one is from Mary McDonough, 28 Jackaronda Court. And the comment question reads as follows. "Why can the developer not comply with Penfield codes and zoning regulations? It seems every applicant is requesting multiple exceptions to the code..." To the codes the town already? Oh, man. I'm not good with computers, folks. Oh, I did it. Okay. "Every applicant is requesting multiple exceptions to the codes the town already has in place. We do not want to allow less setback or buffering. Penfield residents do not want large, obnoxious signs making our neighborhood appear as in Henrietta or Greece." I'm just quoting. I'm not saying that myself, just so I don't get all kinds of...
Hate mail from Henrietta.
Yeah, I know. Well, my mom lives in Greece. "When will the traffic light be? The additional traffic will add more chaos to an already dangerous area. Where will your waste dumpsters be located? In view of the street? Business Insider, February 2023, published an article about a North Carolina Chick-fil-A had to be demolished because it became extremely dangerous conditions for pedestrians and nearby traffic. The developers were asked to tear down the eat-in and... Eat-in and take-out restaurant and rebuild as a take-out only. Have you considered that scenario? Has the town heard any other proposals for this site aside from fast-food Chick-fil-A? Did the developer come with only one idea? Lastly, and ironically, Penfield's motto has been, quote, "Town of planned progress," end quote, with so many developers requesting multiple variances on Penfield codes and scheduled builds stacking up, it seems the town must first get the proper infrastructure in place. Traffic lights, sidewalks, sewers, safety and security services, et cetera. Stop putting the cart before the horse, please." That's the first comment. The second comment is from Judy Traybert of 12 Woodside Drive. Wow. "What happened to the zoning board of appeals? It disappeared?" I'm not sure if that's a technology issue or a comment about our... Oh, okay. All right. So... Well, thank you for that comment there. All right. So having gone through the list of speakers and the electronic comments, and I'll check one more on the phone.
There is one.
Phone?
Mr. Chairman, we do have someone on the phone.
Oh, I thought you were saying the phone. Yeah, okay. I don't have a name or anything, but...
His name is Ben.
Ben, all right. Ben? Welcome. Let's hear from Ben. I wonder if there is an issue because it's not listed here.
Are you there?
Yeah. Hey, Ben, is that you?
Yes, it's me.
All right. We need you to speak up. Can everybody hear, Ben? Yes. A little bit, somewhat, yes. So we need you to speak as loudly as you can without irritating people in your vicinity there. And give us your full name and address, if you would.
Sure. Ben Cantlaro, 1896 Jackson Road. Did you get that?
No.
You didn't hear me?
The last name.
Oh. Ben Cantlaro. 1896 Jackson Road.
Jackson Road? Jackson Road.
Yep, 1896.
You got it?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we are told, yes, we have it.
Okay. My comment is about the traffic. There's going to be a light that's going to be somewhere between the current gymnastics training center and the intersection of 250 and 441. That's going to stop traffic. It's going to stop the flow of traffic. We need to increase the flow, not decrease it. Okay? That's what traffic lights do. And anyone that's traveled past on 250 going south, crossing 441, can tell you that the McDonald's there, you can sit through three traffic lights and not move. So there's no way that, you know, if this restaurant goes in, that the traffic is not going to be flowing into the road and stop the flow of traffic. That's it.
Okay. Hold on a second, Ben, because I'm sorry to call you Ben because I didn't quite catch that last name myself. But any board members have any questions for Ben?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. All right. So I then will invite anyone else in the audience that cares to speak about this application to come up and do so. Okay. Very good. So we've had all the calls, all the electronics submissions, and everybody in person has had a chance to talk. I do have one question for the applicant at this point. I thought I read somewhere recently that the City of Rochester recently approved a Chick-fil-A.
Yes, that's correct.
Can you... You don't have to do it tonight if you want to just submit something. I just... I guess I'd like to know a little bit about that since we've talked about other Chick-fil-A locations in the area. So, you know...
It's like just...
Yeah, go ahead.
It's located in City Gate as part of the City Gate development, which is at the 390 East Henrietta Road area.
Okay.
It's in the... In the City of Rochester, as you mentioned, there's other developments that are occurring in City Gate in addition to the Chick-fil-A.
And will that also have a drive-through?
Yes.
That's like the Costco, is that...
Yes. It'll be located south of the... It's not directly adjacent to the Costco. It's more on the southern part of the City Gate property.
Well, and again, if there's anything you'd like to share about that, what for comparison purposes you think would be helpful, it'd be great to see because, you know, we've talked about Greece a little bit. We've talked a little bit about Aronacote and Henrietta. So, you know, what those municipalities have approved and what we've seen is somewhat helpful. So what the city's approved, I think, at least we should take a look at.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Okay.
There's just one thing I wanted to say. I want to make sure the test for the area variance is clear. I believe they were misspoken by the Preserve Penfield attorney. There is a balancing test. And if the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment, any perceived detriment to the community, the area variances should be granted. I think it was flipped. I just want to clarify that for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure we'll be hearing from both of you a little bit more. Okay. We appreciate that. So at this point, I'm going to make a motion to table. A second. For all the reasons stated tonight, I'm also going to make... Part of that motion is going to believe to... Is going to be to leave the public hearing open. You're submitting some more stuff. Counsel's submitting some more stuff. I would just ask people to keep in mind, you know, it's... We've had two planning board hearings, I think. We're going to have at least two here. So folks have done a good job. Everybody has done a good job of laying forth their arguments and the reasons why. And I don't want to cut anybody off, but, you know, if we've heard it, we've heard it. So... But it'll remain open. And it will be taken up as the... In the work session next time. I don't know if that other tabled matter is going to be tabled again, but if it is, then that's, again, a 10-second motion. So we have a motion by me to table and a second by Andrus. Any further discussion on that motion?
No.
All right.
Just is it to a date certain? When is the date of the next meeting?
Third Thursday of the next month.
January 16th.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Great. I want to thank everybody, and I want to wish everybody a happy and healthy holiday season. Enjoy.
Thank you.
Take care.